Call to order, the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. And unmute you all. I will ask staff to please mute themselves and the clerk to call the roll.
Okay, I'm starting with Alder Prestajakomo. Present, okay. Alder Revere?
Here.
Alder Heck?
Ben Heck, present.
Alder Kemble?
Here.
Alder Rumel?
Present.
Alder Abbas? Alder Carter?
Present.
Alder Balde?
Yes.
Alder Tierney?
Here.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Lemer?
Here.
Alder Furman?
Present. Thank you.
Aldo Boras?
Present.
Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Bidar?
Here.
Alder Martin?
Here.
Alder Skidmore?
Here.
Yeah, Alder Skidmore. Yavacora, Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
All right. And then I will ask our tech facilitator to read the introduction, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to our virtual meeting. We are going to cover a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. To members and city staff, members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. The chair clerk and tech facilitator are responsible for muting and unmuting committee members. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted briefly. Staff, click raise hand when you are asked a question. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the body, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Next is suspension of the rules. President Carter.
Thank you. Suspension of the rules, 2.04 Order of Business, 2.05 Introduction of Business, 2.24 Ordinances, and 2.25 Resolutions for Items Who Designated on the Agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing no objection, those rules are suspended. Item one is a petition, Legis star 62275. President Carter, referral. Move to refer petition.
Second to defer.
Moved and seconded to refer. It will be, excuse me, the correct motion is to accept at this meeting. My apologies.
Move to accept the petition.
Second to accept.
Moved and seconded to accept the petition. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of acceptance? Seeing none, the petition is accepted. That brings us to early public comment. We do have one member of the public registered for early public comment, Alexandra Wilburn of Gorham Street wishing to speak. Do we have Alexandra Wilburn with us?
Yes, Alex W., you should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
And if you could just, yes, if you could just tell us what item you're registered to speak on, please?
Oh, no, I can register for public comment, can't I?
You've registered for early public comment, which is an accommodation for folks who can't join us for the whole meeting. And you need to be registered on a particular item that's on today's agenda.
Okay, no, that I am. I'm registered for item eight is the budget, correct?
Believe that's correct, yes.
I just wanted to say that I do disagree with the budget, the police budget in particular. I believe I read that you, the mayor, had spoke on not honoring the police union's wishes and contracts in terms of raising salary, and I completely agree with that because the police union is, is a racist institution that covers for officers like Matt Kenny, who is a murderer two times over. One of his, someone he murdered, Tony Robinson, should have turned 25. So I did just want to say that I think that it is perfectly okay to reduce the salaries, the salary increase that the racist institution wants to implement, especially when the, the, the police in Madison and in the surrounding areas have historically and currently treat minority communities and impoverished communities terribly. And I also did register for, it's the item for the tiny houses.
Yep, that's on today's agenda.
That's on today's agenda, yes. I did just want to say that I do support the tiny houses. I don't particularly like the language that says that it's sort of temporary. I think tiny housing, that's, you know, city and not outside nonprofit. Because nonprofits are great, but they often, and, and, you know, even affordable housing, and you have to have rental history or a job or to be able to pay at all. And sometimes that's not the case, and we still have to take care of those people. And so I think having that through the city is great, and it doesn't exactly solve the problem right now, because that will take time to set up. And people are right now sleeping outside. So thank you very much for the early public comment register thing.
Thank you. All right, that will bring us then to the consent agenda. President Carter.
Consent agenda will be moved with recommended action listed for each item except: one, items which have registrants wishing to speak; two, items which require extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent; three, items which older persons have separated for discussions, debate purposes.
If you want to read through the items today?
I'm, I'm ready.
Okay.
I was just pausing. Maybe too long. Sorry.
No worries.
Agenda items number three through 12 are public hearing items. Item three, Legis star 60914. And the, the recommendation is to recess public hearing and re-refer to the Plan Commission of November 9th and Common Council of November 17th. Item 10, Legis star 61929. That recommendation is to refer to November 9th. Plan Commission Transportation and Policy on November 2nd. An additional referral to Common Council on November 17th. Legis star, item 11, Legis star 62136. The recommendation is to re-refer to Plan Commission on November 9th and Common Council on November 7th. The following items are extra majority items. Extra majority vote items will be recorded as unanimous unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Number 45, 62528. Amending the 2020 adopted operation, operating budget for the Gulf Enterprise to transfer expenditures authorization between major objects of expenditures requires a 15 vote. Agenda items, part of the consent agenda with additional recommendations as noted. Item 37, Legis star 61860. Items 41, 62409. Recommend action to adopt substitute ordinance. Item 46, 6160683. Recommended to re-refer to plan on November 9th, council on November 17th. Item 50, Legis star 62381. Recommend, Council Plan Commission's recommend, recommendation is to adopt. Item 51, 62399. Plan Commission's recommendation is to adopt. Item 56, 62416. Recommendation, action is to place on file without prejudice. Item 82, 62678. Additional referral on this one to the Task Force on Structure of City Governments Final Report. Implementation Work Group. Items requested for exclusion. Items 18, 62614. Item 59, 61387, reconsideration. Item 60, Legis star 61594, reconsideration. Items introduced from the floor for referral. Legis star 62706. Recommend action is refer to the Landlord and Tenant Shoes Committee. And item 62725 is recommended to re, to refer to the Finance Committee and Common Council on November 17th.
Thank you, Alder. We also have registrants on items 15, 46, 55, and 58. So we will add those to the exclusion list. Again, that's items 15, 46, 55, 58. So the full exclusion list is 15, 18, 46, 55, 58, 59, and 60. Alder Evers, an additional item?
Not an additional item, Mayor. I believe Council President misspoke about item number 56. There, that was a mistake, and that that item is not to be placed on file. I believe that was to be for item 55.
Thank you, Alder. That's correct. The recommendation for item number 55, Legis star 61417, is to place on file without prejudice. But that item is also requested, has speakers, so it will be on the exclusion list.
But item 56, though, will not be placed on file, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to add an additional referral for item number 45, Legislative File Number 62528. I, that's not the right one.
Alder, item number 45 is on our-
Yeah, that's not the right one.
Yeah.
Add. Okay, let's see. Item number 82, Legislative File Number 62678. I'd like to add the Public Safety Review Committee. And item number, or Legislative File Number 62706. I'd like to add referral to the Public Safety Review Committee.
I'm just looking at the clerk to make sure she got both of those.
62706, do you have an agenda item number? It'll be easier for me. Sorry.
Number 82, 62678. And the other is a introduction from the floor, 62706.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm sorry, I'm just not sure if this was in there or not, but there should have been an introduction from the floor for 62737. I didn't hear it, but it might have. You got it? End with a referral to Plan Commission?
Yes.
And, and then could you just clarify the additional referral that Alder Harrington McKinney had requested on the Commons Per Group report? Where was that, too?
That was to PSRC.
Okay.
Thank you, Alder. All right. So are there any additional requests for exclusion? Or notes on the consent agenda? Just to be sure that we're all on the same page. Items three through 12 are public hearings. And item 45 will be recorded as a unanimous vote. And then we have additional recommendations on items 37, 41, 50, 51, 82. On our exclusion list tonight are items 15, 18, 46, 55, 58, 59, and 60. And then we have several introductions from the floor. Are there any disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Are there any additional items for the consent agenda? We have registrants on items 42, 50, and 56 not wishing to speak. Four registrants in support of item 42, three of them available to answer questions. One registrant in support of item 50, and one registrant opposed to item 56. Are there questions for any of our registrants on the consent agenda? Seeing none.
Mayor, did we do 62725? That's a referral. I just don't remember.
Legis star 62725 is an introduction from the floor with referrals to the Finance Committee and back to the council?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so Alder Carter moves, and Alder Abbas seconds the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, then we will go on to our public hearings. Starting with the report of the Plan Commission. And this is item number three, Legis star 60914. Creating sections of the MGO to change zoning of property at 4,000 to 4,150 Packers and 4,201 North Sherman Ave. And we have registrants on this item, so I will open the public hearing and call our first registrant, Paul Nodner of Maple Bluff in opposition, wishing to speak and representing themselves and Madison Friends of Urban Nature.
Mayor, seeing nobody by that name in the list.
Okay, the other registrant is Russell Schwab of Namakagan Lane in opposition, not wishing to speak but available to answer questions. Do we have that person?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right, so we will recess that public hearing, and President Carter, a motion.
Thank you. I move to refer.
Second to refer.
Moved and seconded to refer item number three. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing no objection, that item will be referred. Which takes us to the Report of the Board of Public Works. Item number four, which is Legis star 61878. Discontinuing and vacating a portion of the public road right of way of Parkside Drive. Open that public hearing. We have several registrants, starting with Jeffrey Bartson of Charmaine Drive in support, available to answer questions, representing Stewart Properties LLC and Dave Stewart. Also have David Stewart of Scottsdale, Arizona, in support, available to answer questions, and Peyton Davy of West Wilson Street in opposition, not wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Yes, move to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, that item is adopted. Takes us to item number five. Which is Legis star 62418. Approving plans, et cetera, and a schedule of assessments for Dunning Street, Jackson Street, and LeFollette Ave Reconstruction Assessment District. Open that public hearing. We have no registrants, so we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
I move to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing no objection, that item is adopted. Takes us to item number six. Legis star 62423. Approving plan specifications and schedule of assessments for Rockstream Drive Assessment District. Open the public hearing. We have no registrants. We'll close that public hearing. President Carter?
Move to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Oh. Seeing none, that item is adopted. And number, that brings us to item number seven. Legis star 62424. Approving plan specifications and schedule of assessments for Cedar Street Assessment District. Open a public hearing. We have no registrants. We'll close that public hearing. President Carter?
Move to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none. Item seven is adopted. And that brings us to item number eight, which is the Report of the Finance Committee. Legis star 62322, the 2021 Executive Operating Budget. We'll open a public hearing. We have a number of registrants. Starting with Crystal of Milwaukee in opposition, wishing to speak, to be followed by Lori Schwartz.
Crystal, it looks like you're on the phone. Is it star six to unmute, Tanya? There we go.
Hi, yeah, so my name is Crystal. I wanted to comment on the, my opposition to the, the 2021 operating budget as it stands now. It proposes 5% sector cuts, and I wanted to make it known that we shouldn't, at this time, especially at this time, we should not be divesting from our community. We need to have the police eat 19% of those cuts. I think this board should do what it was elected to do and invest in resources that actually uphold the community instead of continuing to invest in a system that proves itself, proved has historically proved itself to terrorize our community. And, yeah, so I just want to voice my opposition for the operating budget as it exists now, and I think it needs to be amended so that the police are defunded instead of the vital resources that uphold our community.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Lori Schwartz of Birch Ave, neither supporting nor opposing, to be followed by Bonnie Rowe. Do we have Lori?
Yep, Lori, there might be a prompt on your screen.
I, I did click it.
There it is, yep. Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lori Schwartz, and I am resident of the city of Madison. I am a mother, a grandmother of my multiracial and multicultural family, and now multi-generational. I am speaking tonight as part of my personal commitment to anti-racist work, which I am a privileged white person in our society, despite being gay, which I do have experienced the ability to hide at times in my life, being 58 years old. I, I know what it is to be intentionally threatened, but I could hide. That is not the case of our, our history. And why I speak tonight is that as I've been doing reading and working with anti-racist work, I believe that what we've done, it has not worked. Many people might actually even know me, I guess, I don't hide this, not trying to hide this, that I'm a retired Madison police officer. After 30 years of police work in three communities, most of which was in Madison, I believe that we need to stop personal attacks in all directions. I believe that there are win-win situations. I believe that we need to, as in, I run the Madison Starlings Volleyball Club, and in sports analogies, we don't talk about what not to do, we talk about what to do. and in sports analogies, we don't talk about what not to do, we talk about what to do. What we need to do is not to say that people are not worth being safe in the police department. Every officer I know works extremely hard to do their best, and we are an incredibly wonderful department. But what we as a society and as a country have not done is invested in what we need to and make reparations for the things that we, as a legacy, have done wrong. I am privileged, and it can start with me, it can start with my neighborhood, it can start with my salary. I'm, I'm retired, but I believe that we need to make different choices. Rather than, at the management level, we need to look at, in the 80s, it was, we enforced crack cocaine and where the people called to complain about people on the street, as opposed to powder cocaine, which was behind closed doors. We need to look at what we've done as a society to be violent to historically brown people. And a couple of books I recommend that have made me think very differently are Adam Abram Kendi's book, How to Be an Anti-Racist, as well as The Cast, The Origins of Discontent, which I did not know all of that history. I did not know the history of what I have benefited from. And so I say fund, I don't speak defund, I say fund. When we did Safe Harbor as a project at Child Advocacy Center, we actually saved money by working together. And more importantly, we saved children from being re-interviewed and them then made to look worse. I believe that we will all be more successful if we change our discourse, our, our conversations to a win-win. Everyone wants to be safe, from police officers to brown people, to children, to elderly. And I believe that we should look at how to be safe together. And that funding has to go where it's not gone before to be successful. And I appreciate the hard decisions that you each make. I just want the discourse to go towards solutions, and we have to change. We have not been successful. We should not have a business of incarceration, we should not have a business in sports. And that's where I do my work currently as a retired officer, to make a difference in the community that I live in and that minority girls need an opportunity to be equal. I appreciate, this is, these are difficult decisions, and I appreciate the time to address you, and I welcome any questions or comments. I'm done.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Bonnie Rowe of Somerset Lane in opposition, to be followed by Jeremy Ryan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Lori, I really liked what you had to say. Good evening, and thank you for all the work you're doing for our city in these unprecedented times. As we all know, there is a national outcry to reform our system of justice and policing. We've seen such wrong tragic moments, like George Floyd's murder in Minneapolis, just blocks from where my mom grew up. The men and women of our Madison Police Department were at least as grieved as the rest of us that night at that site. We're fortunate to have such an excellent, well-trained force that serves as a national example. Continuing education and training is necessary to having a progressive and community-engaged approach to policing. How will cutting this budget further allow our MPD to make inroads into our community and build bridges, relationships, and trust, especially among high-call areas and underserved communities? How will fewer dollars allow them to invest in hurting juveniles on the path to a criminal record? The heart of our police force is in the right place. They are promoters and guardians of our community, they love their work, and it shows. Would they be happy to have another crisis response team take over some mental health calls? I bet they would, but we are not near the point of having a unit ready, as far as I know, not to mention the legal issues that need to be worked out. At this time, only a law enforcement officer can take someone into protective custody. Right now, police officers alone can handle a situation where de-escalation tactics fail. After all, it takes two sides to de-escalate. To take funding from the police before it is freed up from responding to these calls seems counterproductive. Waiting for the 2022 budget would be more feasible and allow the kinks to be worked out of this new unit. Our force is tired, they don't like to admit it, but these crises are bringing about a perfect storm of pain, chaos, and crime in our city. The police are not the source or cause of this crime, but they are the ones responding to it. Whether it be the child injured by glass after a bullet flew through the window of their home, the awful car crashes that took the lives of Kyla Robinson or Anthony Chung, or the fatal shooting of 11-year-old Anisa Scott as she rode in a car on a busy street in the middle of the day. Crime is off the charts and growing in our city. Shots fired incidents are up 76% over this time last year. My Nextdoor Neighborhood app is flooded with heartfelt stories of crimes in our neighborhood. Shots fired outside one man's home brought out his PTSD. Others have woken up in the night with intruders in their homes. Some have locked out the door to go to work, only to find their car had been stolen from their driveway. In the reality of this moment, I was surprised to see the mayor's 2021 budget memo and her desire to now cut $2 million from MPD's budget double the amount from just days before. This seems to be a slap in the face of our frustrated residents and the hard-working officers of our MPD. It is a victory for those violating our laws. To take away funding when officers are having to work 12 to 18-hour shifts too often is unfair and reckless. How will we have healthy officers able to make decisions according to best practices when they are running on empty? How will they remain cutting-edge with their training and community outreach with still more budget cuts? We cannot lose any more officers from our streets. We are already 18 patrol officers short compared to national averages of similar cities. In the past couple of years, we have lost too many, 19 important MPD roles due to budget cuts, from community policing teams to gang and neighborhood officers and the wonderful Core Program. Now we may lose more when we actually need 13 additional patrols to take on the town of Madison a little over a year from now. Defunding the police is in vogue nationally, and many departments around the country need major change. I wouldn't be surprised if there are alders here tonight who have already or soon will submit amendments to cut MPD's budget even further. I hope there will be just as many alders who will look at all the facts of our current situation, realize the grave situation our city is in, acknowledge the impeccable department we have here in Madison, and realize that it will only continue to flourish and excel with ongoing training, top-notch protocols, and ongoing efforts in cultural competency. The 2021 budget moves us in the wrong direction as a city and reduces MPD's authorized strength at a time we need it most. I urge you to restore full funding for the MPD. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jeremy Ryan of Audana Road, to be followed by Benny Ramirez. Oh, I'm sorry, before we go on, Alder Harrington McKinnon, you've had your hand up?
My hand really was up for Lori. I don't know if she's still on the line, if she's gone, then I'll hold my comments, but...
Alder, we'll, we'll come back to questions for registrants after we go through all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right. So then Jeremy Ryan, to be followed by Benny Ramirez.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to request video. I believe that you were briefed by the City Attorney's Office on this matter, Mayor, so I'd like to request video for disability rights accommodation for people who are hard of hearing, so they can remember.
Anyone who requires a disability accommodation can call the council office and arrange that in advance. Our policy remains that we do not have video for registrants.
Well, City Attorney Haas had said that the...
I have spoken with City Attorney Haas, and this is his advice.
Oh, so you're still going to play that? You don't care about people with disabilities? Because someone could come later and watch this stream, and they wouldn't...
Mr. Ryan, anybody who wishes to request an accommodation may do so through the council office. Did you wish to testify on the budget?
Yeah, but I mean, it's kind of horrible that you should on disabled folks. But either way, that's your business.
Mr. Ryan, I'll also warn you that this body doesn't allow obscenities during our meetings, so if you persist in using them, your testimony will be over.
Okay, well, if you persist in harming people with disabilities, then I will continue to be on your tail up there. That's without profanities, Your Honor. But as far as the budget goes, I think, I think that, I'm glad that you finally, after it was brought to your attention multiple times, decided to go with the will of the people and what they had predominantly said in all the public hearings, when you suggested increasing the budget, that, that you went with that, and now it includes a decrease. But I think we need to go even further, not only decreasing the police, but taking them off the streets. I mean, police don't get there for crimes. We could have community mental health professionals checking in on everyone who has known issues, and we could pay for that with the police money. And we could have the police just investigate the crime, the, the actual violent crimes that are going on. And that type of model would work much better. We have the ability to be at the forefront of the country on something like this. And I think it's just unfortunate that Madison, which is generally progressive, or at least pretends to be, I think it's unfortunate that we are not trying to be the progressive centerhold that we have been in the past. And we do not have a good police department. We have a police department that, much like the mayor, much like the city, is good at talking themselves up, but actually not doing anything. And so I, I really do think that we should go further in cutting the police and further in funding social services. And I think that we really need to discuss permanent housing for the homeless, because that's a public health crisis, and I think that should be included in the budget. Because we cannot have homeless people out on the streets when this pandemic is only getting worse. And that's probably not going to change anytime soon. You can blame whoever you want, the fact is that it's there. And they need somewhere to use the bathroom, they need somewhere to, to stay. Otherwise, whether they have symptoms or not, they have to be around other people. They don't have a choice. We can't criminalize breathing, but we need to treat homelessness, especially at this point as a public health crisis. I mean, we've been talking about this for so many years that clearly this board does not actually view this as a moral issue, and that's fine, take out the morality. Even if you say screw the homeless, it, it is still a public health issue. And I think it's just ridiculous that Alder Balday didn't even show up for the hearing to try to kick the homeless out of the park, but expects it to actually go through. And so we need to have permanent housing for the homeless, and I think we should cut the police budget further. And I will yield the floor on this matter and say, hopefully, you respect disability accommodations in the future.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Benny Ramirez of Franklin Street in opposition, to be followed by Allison Bellburn.
There's no Benny Ramirez in the list.
Okay, Allison Bellburn of Mifflin Street in opposition, to be followed by Kay Galuska.
Allison, you may have a prompt on your screen to unmute.
That's not me.
That's not you, okay, sorry about that.
Same name, but not me.
Multiple Allisons. Do we have another Allison?
That is the only one.
Okay, so then Kay Galuska of Mifflin in opposition, to be followed by Lauren Byrne.
There is no Kay, but there is a Lauren Byrne.
So Lauren Byrne of Sydney Street in opposition, to be followed by Lindsay Lund.
Hello, I'm, I'm Lauren, and...
Go ahead, Lauren.
Okay, the Allison and Kay, I think are waiting to be called. I think that has happened in some meetings. At any rate, thank you for calling me. Interesting and well-informed testimony that can reach different conclusions, interpret facts differently, know different facts. With regard to the city operating budget and cutting any funds from human services, from humanity-based services, libraries, which are one of the best institutions in this entire country, arts programs, which are vital to the human spirit, and protesting the, the cutting of the police budget makes no sense to me. And I think if more informed we get, the more, less sense it makes. Not saying police officers are bad people, not saying they're not well-meaning, saying they're really misinformed if they think they can do social good through being police officers. A short video was shared and read by Marianne Kaba, which is well worth watching, because it gives a history of policing. What is the role of police? When people say, oh, the system is broken, in fact, the system is working really well. I cannot remember ever walking in the street and seeing a police officer and feeling safer. I cannot imagine any reason there in the schools other than to intimidate. The idea of being armed is never reassuring. The idea of being armed increases the chance of shots being fired. The police really don't have any particular business unless they want to wear a sandwich board saying, we can take cats out of trees as well. They can be retrained. Everybody should have work, everybody should have love, everybody should have enough money to live on. Everybody should have healthcare, even unemployed police officers. There's no reason to exclude them. In the meanwhile, the money could be used to train more mental health physicians for the streets, get everyone more aware of crisis situations and how best to handle them. And that could be a universal civic service. But cutting, again, cutting funds from institutions that represent our humanity and our potential in favor of an agency, of a, of a department whose role is to discipline and deny and intimidate is, despite whatever well-intentioned people there, a really bad use of money. That's my comment on the budget. I don't know if you want, you calling people again, but I think I'm supposed to comment now on other issues. And that main one would be the Tiny Homes Project. It's kind of the same...
Lauren, we'll, we'll come to that item further on in our agenda.
So you'll come back to me then?
We'll come back to you.
Don't want to take too much time, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, there is another Allison that just popped in the list.
All right, so let's see if that's Allison Bellburn.
Allison, you're unmuted.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Just barely.
Okay, how about now?
Better.
Okay. Yeah, I'm speaking about the budget. So people who are much smarter than me have said that budgets are moral documents. So I'm hoping that you guys can take some time to consider whether this budget reflects your morality. With cuts happening all over the place, if your morality says that the police should not only not take their, take a cut to reflect the people's voices, to say where our priorities are, but not even take their fair share of the cut in the middle of a revolution that is asking, that is imploring you to do these things? Take a minute and think about whether this reflects your morality. I know that you think that you know better than us, that you know better than activists, that you know better than people with lived experiences of the police. But that's what paternalism is, plain and simple. When, when you ask yourself these questions, when you say, what should we invest in? And you say, you profess to care about things like homelessness, you profess to care about people's mental health and their food security and education, why don't you have your moral document reflect that? Why would we invest in anything else when there are the problems out there with people's basic needs that there are? Now, if those things are your priorities, then show that they're your priorities. And I'm sure you have some fancy calculations that say, well, we need to invest in the whole city so that the city doesn't get messed up, and then everybody's basic needs are all affected, even the, especially those who are most vulnerable. So I have a question about that, and my question is, how come when Republicans have this mentality, we call it trickle-down economics, but when liberals do it, we think it's cute? This is, if we care about vulnerable people, if we care about people's basic needs, then your budget should reflect that. This budget does not reflect that. This budget reflects business as usual, this is an investment in the status quo. The police, period, don't protect us. I'm, I'm white, they don't protect me. But for people who don't look like me, the danger is all the more greater. But the police were never meant to protect us, that's just simply not their job function. They've taken on certain functions to make us think that that's what they do. But if you look at the statistics, if you watch that video by Marianne Kaba, if you watch the Defund the Police video and listen to the history, you know that this period not what they are here for. They don't spend their time protecting us, they spend their time writing tickets, they spend their time punishing people for being poor. They literally spend most of their time punishing people for being poor. So if you're going to invest in the police, you should know these facts. And I have a feeling that most of you don't, because I have the feeling that most of you's morality is at least above knowingly investing in a force that is here to protect private property. I have to believe at least that much, because you guys aren't Republicans, you're just lib... liberals. You're just liberals who think you know better, and you're not listening. I believe that in your world, you in some way have contrived things so that you think that you care about vulnerable people. This budget does not reflect care in vulnerable people. This budget reflects an investment in business as usual. In the middle of a revolution, you are voting for business as usual. In the middle of a revolution, you are doing all that you can to suppress that revolution, a revolution that is here to change things for the good. You're doing exactly what people expect politicians to do, which is to suppress good. This is the reason that people are disillusioned. This is the reason that people can and must take to the streets. The same people that you cry for taking the actions that they take when there's no other option. This is why there's no other option. You keep voting for business as usual, cycle after cycle, no matter what we say, no matter what we know, even though we know more than you do on these issues. So I just hope you'll take some time. I hope you think about your morality and think about how your calculations, whoever, whatever business firm told you to calculate things this way, where's your proof? Where's your proof that these funds trickle down? You know that if you invest a dollar in homelessness, a dollar will go to homelessness. You invest a dollar in State Street, that dollar is going to State Street.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Lindsay Lund of Dayton Street in opposition to be followed by Julia Levine.
Lindsay, you may have a prompt on your screen asking to be unmuted. There you are.
Hi. Thanks. Thanks for opening the public comment. I want to echo what some of the last commenters have said. I've been looking at the Common Council's mission statement and core values, equity, civic engagement, well-being, that you're committed to creating a community where all can thrive and feel safe, shared prosperity. And I am worried that continuing to fund MPD at the same levels over and over, as Allison was just saying, in the middle of a revolution, in the middle of the people crying out for change and for new ideas, it just makes me sad. It makes me sad to be a part of a community that will continue to do that. The police are not making us safer. They're not. There was a caller earlier talking about who wanted to increase MPD's budget, talking about, you know, all the, something about property crimes, or, you know, a car being stolen in her neighborhood. And I think that's pretty much proof that the police are not, you know, they're not preventing crimes. We need to be investing in people in this community, not, you know, not in locking people up, not in terrorizing our neighbors. I really encourage you to be further making cuts to the police budget, thinking, keeping those core values of the Common Council in mind, you know, especially that well-being idea, committed to creating a community where all can thrive and feel safe. Police are not making most of us feel safe, even in my neighborhood. So thanks for listening and keep thinking about defunding the police. And do it. Do it this time. It's really time. Put that money in other places. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Julia Levine of Johnson Street in opposition to be followed by Tyson Vitale.
There's no Julia, but Tyson is here.
So then we have Tyson Vitale of Dell Drive in opposition to be followed by Fabio Mora Arieta.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. So I'm Tyson. I'm sure you guys, most of you know me. I'm just calling, or I wanted to call in just to speak in opposition to this budget, specifically what other people have been reiterating, with the exception of Jeremy, if you don't know him. And, you know, we need to dismantle the legacy of the status quo that is unacceptable. And we can literally do this on a local level when it comes to the police. Our city's, quite frankly, been doing this my entire life, which is gaslighting black people, saying that we have, you know, values that we never abide by. And, you know, the moral arbiter, the moral document of this city is the budget, and we're deciding to increase funding right now for the police during this time, when, you know, people have spoken out, when people are in the streets, when it's not going to get better until we actually address these things. And I feel like a lot of you just don't seem to realize that. We need to actually fundamentally make the change that we say we want, or at least abide by the values that we say we have. And, you know, I ask all of you council members, quite frankly, and the mayor, like, to stop saying that you value these things when you're not doing it. It's not okay, and it's not acceptable. It's frankly gaslighting black people. It is why one of, why Madison is one of the worst, has some of the worst racial disparities in the country, yet at the same time, we're considered one of the most progressive areas, right? It's not true when it comes to race. I want to thank Lori Schwartz, who spoke earlier, who was a retired Madison police officer, talking about how we need to start investing in our community, and actually starting to put funding where the places, in the places that we actually need it, that will actually help our community members. And, you know, funding and increasing funding for the police during a pandemic, when everyone else's budget is being cut, really shows where our values are, and it's not okay. It's quite frankly kind of angering. You know, again, this is the true moral document of our city, and the alleged spoken values of most of you, maybe not Skidmore, is to value black lives, that black lives matter, to address the racial disparities and, you know, the racial injustices within our city, yet our budget is going to increasing funding for the police while it is decreasing on every other level. You know, while the city of Madison faces a budget shortfall and other agencies are being cut, the budget for police is increasing by, what is it, over $2 million? I think 25, or 2,500, I believe, an increase of about 3% or a little bit more than 3%. I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe those numbers are generally accurate. And that, I just don't know how you guys think that's okay. I don't know why you guys think that you, specifically people who put this budget together in the merit, why you think that is something that is acceptable, while at the same time saying black lives matter, while at the same time saying we're going to address the racial inequities that we have and the racial injustices that we have, while putting our budget towards the police instead of allocating those resources to invest in our community? That's just not okay. Please amend this budget to stop the white supremacy that's within our city, that is shown by so much data, that is shown by all the, so many studies at the county, the city, and so many other folks have done, showing that they exist. We were at least past that point where we say they don't exist and pretend that they don't, ignore them. We know they exist. It's too right in our face to not admit that, or show that, or address that, or say that we're at least addressing it. So I ask that instead of you guys saying that you're going to address it, actually doing so. And that starts first and foremost to with our budget. This isn't okay. It's not okay. And quite frankly, y'all will not get away with this in one way or the other. And what do I mean by that? I mean that either you're going to be elected out, or you're not going to look good in history. You know, we're going to remember this, and people are going to remember this, and remember those black kids that are, you know, in the streets right now, or the black kids that are going to our schools, that are going to be older voters. Well, long when y'all are gone, and we're going to look back at this time, when we had an opportunity to really make the change that we need to make in the city, and you all as leaders, don't fail us. Otherwise, you're not going to be written in the history books. Your legacy is not going to be something that is going to be remembered fondly. I don't know if you guys care about that, but I'm just stating that, because it's true. So thank you. And please amend this to stop putting more money into our police department and invest in our community. You know, we need to just get past this. We need to just start talking about, like what Lori said, proactive ways in what we should be doing, instead of talking about what we shouldn't be doing. But unfortunately, we have to constantly talk about what we shouldn't be doing, because nothing changes. So please change that.
Apologies, apologies. Our next registrant is Fabio Mora Arieta of Seventh Street in opposition to be followed by Amy Owen.
Hello, Fabio here. Thank you for your time. And I want to just provide a little bit of context. I had a conversation with some local politicians, and they gave me pretty standard answers, which I somehow think that are pre-cooked in those think tanks, and we just happily repeat them. And I hear something like, yeah, I want to defund the police, but the unions, the unions are locked down contracts, so we cannot do that. So, and I feel like that's a comfortable position to be, when you say the nice thing, but you are not willing to go further on this. And I just want to go back in time, when another conversation in this city was on the table. And I remember two editorials for the local newspaper listing all the things why we should build a jail, a new jail. It's not related, but it is related. So these two editorials listed that there is lead, there is bad, we cannot let the people out of the jails. And they listed all the things. And the community pretty much say like, yeah, we don't want to build a new jail, but we kind of have to, you know? It's a lot of lead over there. And the editorial papers were very thrilled about this. Later, I also realized that the same talking points were used in California and in Minnesota to build other jails over there in the, in the, in the energy fair here in Wisconsin, when other activists, where they're sharing their stories. And there's the same thing happening across other states, building a jail and increasing police. But so what I want to argue, guys, is if because someone gave the order to release the people in jail, we will be able to revert that, and now we have less people in jail, now we're considering not to build it. In the same way, that perhaps you feel comfortable saying like, yeah, I want to reduce the police expenditure and expand it differently, but we can't, we cannot do that. I argue, guys, to put yourself in an uncomfortable position for a second, and try to look for a creative way to do things differently, and push harder to look for ways to open that contract, or whatever it takes, to make the changes that are needed, so we can not, I don't know, defund the police is the right term, because it is that what we already defund is all the social problems that we have, and that already happened, and no one discusses. No, there was not a hashtag, that happened. And right now, we are feeding our kids in our schools packaged food, sugar, cereal, and we are okay with that. And we just keep pumping more money into police budget. So what I will ask you guys is to think outside of the box. Don't take those ideas for granted, and really challenge and push harder. If the attorney, that the one that perhaps was the one who reviewed the contract with the union, with the cops union, is telling you that we cannot open that contract for negotiation, why don't we look another point of view? I am from Costa Rica, and I used to say, when you have two attorneys, you will have three different point of views. So look for another point of view and challenge that talking point, and please consider fund, again, the social needs that we need. We have to fund better things for our kids, better things for our community, and not just more fancy cars harassing citizens here. And that's what I want to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Amy Owen of Buena Vista Street in opposition to be followed by Rachel Christman.
Hi. I am going to again ask that if you don't need to announce where people live, please don't do that. Choosing not to do that creates a better opportunity for safety for everyone to testify and participate in the political process. So I have owned a home here for the past 15 years, and it's pretty well-known that our property taxes are fairly high, especially in the neighborhood I happen to have bought in. And I am asking you to take my money and take it to support public health programs, education, social workers, take it to support affordable housing initiatives, and mental health and addictions treatment options. Please, take my tax dollars. I want these things funded, because I think that they're going to create the kind of city and community that I want to see. I also own a data analysis and evaluation consulting firm, and I spend a lot of time working with data, and especially calculating racial and ethnic disparities on a whole lot of indicators for our city and county and state. And there are a lot of residents that are really hurting, which we've already known in the city for a really, really long time. And there are a lot of ways to heal this, to create a city where every resident can thrive, and the budget is one of these ways. It can happen, but we need to fund it, and we need to prioritize it, and we simply need to choose that's what we're going to do and who we're going to be. The budget needs to align with our values, though, to get that. And I think that there's a gap here in this budget, especially in the proportion of our budget we're spending on police, and especially in the increase in that police budget I'm seeing now, when instead we have an opportunity to create real change and really be on a path to healing some issues that our community has needed healing in for some time. And I still want that. And I think a lot of residents do. I still want that city where racial equity is possible and everyone is thriving. I know I'm not the only person in the city who wants that, and people of color are hurting. And white people like myself want the same thing. We want a city where every resident can thrive and have similar opportunities. But I don't think we can get there with this budget. And we truly cannot afford to continue on like this as a community. So I'm just asking, please, I know it's a difficult time for the city financially. Due to COVID, there's less income, but set us on the path to healing, and you can do it, and that will be your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Rachel Christman of Jefferson Street in opposition to be followed Rachel, I think you have to unmute yourself. You should have a prompt, Rachel. There you go. Yes.
Oh, perfect. It was glitching every time I did that. Thank you all so much. I'm here today. Well, first, I would like to acknowledge that we're on Ho-Chunk land, and any solutions that we come up with should really also be talked about with the Ho-Chunk president. Could I also please request that any member of the council make a motion to allow video recordings? So if somebody hard of hearing, such as myself, wants to watch later, they can, since this is being recorded.
Rachel, these videos, these meetings are recorded.
Yes, I know, but if somebody hard of hearing wants to watch later, will there be closed captioning?
If someone wants to request an accommodation, including yourself, feel free to contact the council office, and those accommodations will be provided.
Okay. I'm hoping maybe there could be like a note on the YouTube recording for people hard of hearing, so that they know, I'm sure that they know to request, if they wanted to hear what the public had to say, somebody's probably typing that out, right?
We do have minutes from every meeting, and the ability to, or the note around requesting accommodations is printed on every single agenda.
Oh, good. Okay. Well, that's wonderful. Thank you guys so much for being here. I want to let you guys know that I've lived in this area my whole life. I'm a mother. I am a student at Edward College. I also was a bartender and delivery driver in the downtown area for a number of years in my younger college days. And so I have a lot of experience in the downtown area, and I want to let you guys know that I've seen it with my own. I've seen it with my own eyes. I mean, I've seen it happen time and time and time again, and the certain people that they target. And I just, I want everybody to just, I mean, and I'm serious, you guys, really do this. I want everybody to just close your eyes and take a collective breath together with me, okay? So really just put your hand on your heart and feel, and take a breath in and out. And remember that we are all here together. We're all here to work together. And not be talking about these 80-something agenda items that it's, we're not, we're not taking what's happening seriously enough. We're the worst in the entire world for COVID right now in our state. And I don't think that we're thinking towards the next months. I mean, we know how bad winter gets in this state. There are already so many people sleeping in their cars right now. I'm seeing it even on the smaller Facebook neighborhood sites, people asking for places to go, but the shelters are full. I know that we're trying to purchase the property over in Manona for the men's emergency shelter. That's not good enough. We have to put our heads together. We have to all work together. Yesterday I suggested and proposed that we actually set up an emergency shelter within the West Gate Mall, which is currently vacant. And it is currently, I think, under the control of the city of Madison still, and is supposed to be built into affordable housing. We don't have the luxury of thinking even a year ahead right now. We have to think about these next couple of months. Please, please, please just save us the horror of having children freeze to death in tents. We need to be thinking about right now and about the children in our own lives and about the ability that we have to have a roof over our heads. More and more people after December, you guys, I've been a renter for a long time, okay? There are landlords that do not care. And as soon as that rent moratorium is done, there are going to be mass evictions. People are going to be coming to Madison. Rural Wisconsin is getting hit so bad right now. There are going to be so many people evicted from their homes, coming to Madison, seeking shelter. We need to get ready for these things. We cannot be giving the police money. We need to completely defund the police. No more money for the police. We need to put it into our community now. We need to save people's lives now. And if you are going to approve this agenda effectively, you're killing people. I know that that's, I'm not trying to say that it's you that should feel bad. It's our society. It's our society together, but you guys are elected officials. Thank you guys so much for all that you do. I understand how hard of a decision this is. We shouldn't be approving permits for new construction that's just going to pollute Madison more and more. We need to stop. Everything needs to stop. And we need to work together now, and we need to save each other now. We have to keep us safe. And that doesn't include giving more money to millionaires and billionaires and police that shoot people just for fun. Thank you guys so much for all the work that you guys do here, and I really appreciate it. And as a City Madison resident, I hope that you guys will do the right thing and not approve this budget. Thank you.
Our next registrant is Larissa Joanna of Blair Street, to be followed by Lisa Yang.
There is no Larissa or Lisa.
Right. How about Anthony Flynn of Gettle Ave in opposition to be followed by Rachel Neeson?
Yes, Anthony is here.
Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm, I'm reaching out today to share my opposition to this budget in part because it extends 5% cuts to critical infrastructure, including parks and other aspects that are critical for supporting folks in need in Madison while sustaining and I believe expanding the police budget. I think that this is beyond unjust, especially given the both movement and moment that we are in here locally in Madison with regard to Black Lives and the broader movement for liberation here in Madison. I come to you as someone who is a mental health clinician and also a educator here in Madison at UW, graduate student as well. And I, part of my work involves looking into the social determinants of health and understanding. I think there's a growing understanding in the mental health field that mental health isn't just what's in people's head. It's also manifested from the systems and particularly systems of oppression in which they inhabit. And I think that the budget as it stands right now would further systems of oppression that produce mental health problems and challenges amongst our folks. I think that it is critical that not only that we not expand the police budget, but defund them. I think that y'all need to put your money where your mouth is. I believe most of you are progressives. Satya, I voted for you in part thinking that you were progressive, and then also watched as you sent a curfew order that empowered the police to gas protesters, myself included. So thanks for that. And so this is a unique opportunity that y'all have to put your money where your mouth is, literally. And actually, not even your money, put our money where your mouth is, in terms of your commitment to liberation, commitment to racial justice. So I think it's going to be critical for y'all to defund the police with this budget and to reject the budget as it stands. And I appreciate what other folks had said before and alluded to the fact that one way or another, there's going to be consequences if you choose not to, in terms of whether that be voting you out or history not looking particularly kind upon you. I think that it is critical that we put our money into programs that are actually impactful. Police simply are not a good investment for the needs of our communities. And I think that it's really quite deplorable that in the middle of a global pandemic and it's ensuing economic crisis, we're thinking about maintaining police budgets the way they are, and particularly in the context of this movement at the moment. And I think that y'all have been afforded a pretty unique opportunity to defund police by virtue of austerity, right? There's a budget shortfall. And there's very little to no reason in my mind why you cannot choose to defund police through the rationale of austerity. And if there are going to be cuts and there is going to be a budget shortfall that we experience, the police should show them that budget, that budget shortfall. Last thing I would add is, as a union member, I've heard, you know, some allusions to to police unions and their role in this issue and how that makes it troublesome. I just want to make it abundantly clear that police have no place in the modern labor movement because oppression of minoritized racial minorities and working people is not meaningful work. So thank you, and I'll yield the rest.
All right. We have also present potentially Rachel Neeson of Lakewood Gardens in opposition, available to answer questions, and Colleen Neary of Winnebago Street in opposition, available to answer questions. Are there questions?
Mayor, we do have additional registrants.
Oh, let me refresh and see if I can find them. Yep, yep. Okay, so next is Ananda Deacon of West Washington in opposition, representing the ACLU Student Alliance, to be followed by Megan Elizabeth Spielbauer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Ananda. I'm the current president of the ACLU Student Alliance here on the Madison campus. I wanted to speak a bit about what increasing funding to police would do, but to speak about that, I would first have to say what it won't do. So if you increase the police budget, it won't provide homes for those without homes, something that Madison is currently doing nothing about, despite it getting colder and colder each day. Organizations like The Beacon and Link Madison are doing that, though, with very minimal funding. Increasing the budget also won't provide food for those who are food insecure. Orgs like Impact Demand and Freedom Inc. are doing that, again, with minimal funding. And lastly, it won't keep our community safe because we do that. We, as a community, keep ourselves safe. If the UW Madison, if Madison Police or anything like UW Madison Police, and I have a hunch that they are, they are racist, sexist, violent, and just blatantly disrespectful, both on Twitter and in person. And they would not be the people I would call if I was in danger. We all see what's happening with SARS and police brutality in Nigeria, and we all see what's happening, many of us for the first time. We all see what's happening in front of our very eyes here and all over our own country with police who shoot first and shoot later. Please, please get this through all of your heads, that even in the midst of a pandemic, in the midst of the biggest Black Lives Matter movement ever, and in the midst of my midterms, I am here right now, making the time to speak here today because this is important. Cutting the police budget by 80% at the very least and putting that money where it actually can provide housing and food security is one of the most important things that this racist city may ever do. Please, please believe that. And please don't increase police funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Megan Elizabeth Spielbauer of Carroll Street in opposition to be followed by Kazua Vaj.
Mayor, we're having some trouble unmuting Megan. If we could go on to the next person.
All right, so we'll come back to Megan hopefully and go on to Kazua Vaj of Grandview Boulevard in opposition to be followed by Monker Donway.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I know that it's taken a while to get here, both from the movement side and also in following how you've come and how the Common Council has been looking and vetting the budget. And so I know that it's not a light task that, from your side or from our side. And by the time we get here, many decisions have been made. And so oftentimes when I'm testifying or I have my three minutes to speak or my five minutes to speak, I'm trying to figure out what to say to change people's minds and stuff like that. But I know who's on the Common Council, and I know, and I've spoken to you, the mayor, about some of the things that I think are really important to the community. Some of the things that have been troubling me since the pandemic, I think as an organization that both does organizing and direct services, I think that when the pandemic hit, none of my staffs were able to shelter at home. We, in fact, became essential workers because of the direct services that we provide. And I can tell you that what the pandemic did was it shed a light on some of the things that were failing our communities. And as you can see, with distance learning, we can see that the lack of funding makes it so that kids don't have access and to something as simple as internet, to a working computer. Parents don't, who can't read and write, are having a horrible time trying to figure out assignments, trying to figure out how to get kids to learn. I've also, as an organization that runs a food pantry, I can tell you, you know, people who are poor, who don't have access to transportation, having to find a lift to get to where we're at to get food, or we have to lift the food to them, or get volunteers to send food. You know, I'm really hoping that people who are listening tonight, especially if you have, if you're an elected official and you have the power to make a decision, whether you cut millions from education or from housing or transportation, really look at having this cut come from the 80 million that you're giving to the police department. And I say that to say, for a long time, you know, I grew up with my sister, and she was severely epileptic, and we always had to call the police or the call 911 for her when she would have an episode and hurt herself. And I can tell you all that during those times, we were always contemplating, do we call 911 at all? Because the fear of having the police show up at the same time as the ambulance, when you know that you don't actually need the police, and having a fear of having them come, but not, if you don't call 911, and we just didn't know. But now that I'm older, I know that I can call the ambulance without calling the police, and what a relief that is. And so I can tell you all that as somebody who has been serving the community nonstop for the past, what, seven months, we don't need, like, safety doesn't come in the forms of policing. What I know to be true is safety comes in the form of children having access to healthy food. Children having access to the internet to do their homework. Elders having medical assistance and having medical care, getting tested when they need to be tested. You know, there are so many home families and my families in Madison who are looking to alternative self-medication for COVID. They're too afraid to tell anybody that they have COVID, and so they're taking a chance at home, infecting a whole household nobody knows about. And it's too shameful to get COVID because now we've turned, now that COVID is killing people who look like us, it's no longer, everybody can get COVID and it's not your fault. When it looks like black and brown people are dying from it, it becomes a personal responsibility to keep yourself safe, and it shouldn't be that way. And so I guess I'm saying this because I'm trying to paint a picture of what it is that we're struggling with on the ground here, when you have an option or an opportunity to do something historic. The pandemic is showing you that the lack of funding
That is five minutes.
I just want to say, the pandemic is showing you that there is a different way to allocate your funds. There is a way to cut the pie so that people are not suffering on the ground. And I can tell you that people are suffering, people
Kazua, you need to wrap up.
People need to have their basic human needs met. So defund the police and allocate the funds to the people and not to more policing.
Thank you. Do we have Megan?
Yes, we do.
All right. Megan Elizabeth Spielbauer in opposition, to be followed by Monker Donway.
Hi, sorry, I missed the, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I missed the first call. I'm a student, and this is kind of a long meeting to sit in on. So I just wanted to say, yes, I'm in opposition of the executive budget for this year or for the following year. I would like to see the police eat all of the cuts for the budget. I just organizing and I have been protesting in our community against the atrocities that we've seen the police commit against people. And I just, I don't, as a part of the solution to creating a safe community, because they are based in white supremacy, and the officers continue to perpetuate that. They're not open to having, they're not open to having conversations about their own defunding while we continue to defund education at every step. Cutting education is something we've done easily as a nation over and over again, and we've called it tax cuts. But when we ask to defund the police, it's suddenly some new concept. And I think that it's time that we defund the police and we really do significantly cut their budgets and put that money into things that are going to cause or actually be crime preventers. When we continue to be reactive as a society, because what, or when we continue to be reactive as a society, we're not moving forward. We're just continuing to react to problems that have already existed in our communities. People aren't committing crimes. People aren't being homeless, or when we criminalize homelessness, or people aren't doing, engaging in drugs or things like of that nature because their, because their needs have not been met, and now they are at a point in this life where this decision makes sense. And I think that if we actually invest in our schools, we invest in our students, opportunity gaps that exist between different students, and specifically, we invest in our communities of color in Madison who need it and who can't trust the police. I know someone spoke earlier about how crime is so much higher and how we need the police to keep our safe. And I think that that is very white. That is a white perspective. That is not the reality of people who are of color, specifically black people, who are living in a community where a police officer, Matthew Kenny, murdered Tony Robinson five years ago, and they still have, has not seen justice. And I think the reality is when things like that happen and you people tell BIPOC voices or BIPOC people that the police can be trusted, they can be reformed, when it's been time and time again for years in cities similar to ours, that That nothing has changed, nothing has happened. So I think it's time to take decisive action and that means defunding that police. It doesn't mean waiting till next year's budget when we can think about it more, we can do another study about how. Force works or we can pretend to adopt policies and use loopholes to still engage in violent behaviors in the police. It's time to take action now and actually change. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Monker Donway of Mill Street in opposition to be followed by Jack Phillips.
Hey, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to play that that video clip. I don't know if everyone heard that. But that's the sound of this current global uprising that we're in right now. That is the sound of people from Minnesota to Benin City, Nigeria, to Angola, to Liberia, to Namibia. To Kenya, to all across the world, to London, to Paris. St. Louis, New York DC, Atlanta. Oakland. All across this world, people are rising up, people are fed up. People are in open rebellion and uprising. And it is specifically against racist police terror. Because that is what they are, state-funded and sanctioned terrorism. That's what they are in our communities. I'm not gonna sit up here and waste my time and waste my voice trying to convince anyone in the city council. About this issue. I believe that these meetings, just as you all have professed yourselves, are inequitable. Are not accessible to the common person who your policies actually mostly affect. So I'm gonna talk to my people, I'm gonna take this time to talk to my people and say, y'all, we are still on our shit. We are still in a global uprising. And people right now are being murdered in the street because they're exercising their rights to protest. And to say when something is not working out for them, because many of these leaders in our nations or in our city. Claim to be doing the right thing for us, claim to be stewarding our money and our resources in the correct way. And they're not doing it. And so we're voicing our opinions. We in Madison here were in open uprising as well over the summer. We mobilized thousands of people in the street in defense of black lives and we are still on our shit. We are making sure that our powerful protest is now becoming powerful campaigns that lead to powerful and meaningful changes in the lives of our people. So I want to continue to applaud our work as a community. So many people have come on this meeting tonight to speak truth to power. And to put these people on this common council on notice. And believe me, they have been on notice for years. Because I know for a fact and public record will show that there have been people throughout the existence of this city. And in recent times that have been telling y'all, the police are terrorizing our communities. And at the end of the day, you all have chosen, these people have chosen to continuously put the interest. Of real estate folks and the police and and private property over the interest of the people, of the common person. And so I'm gonna say again, I'm speaking so it's when I say continue putting pressure on these people, continue showing up. Let's continue to organize, let's continue to meet and put our heads together to tear down this unjust world. And build something new, build something better. All these people, their time will be up soon. And we need to be getting ready to make sure that we put people in these positions that actually are here for our best interests. And not here to line the pockets of the already wealthy and not here to gaslight us, as another person said earlier. Not here to continue facilitating the death of black people. So I want to applaud us. We are doing a wonderful job and let us continue. What I want to say around this budget is that anyone, anyone who wants to continue. Saying or peddling the same old lies around the police, keep us safe. Know that we know that we all see through that you're a liar. Know that we see through it, that that's, those are false claims because the data has proven that the police don't do anything. Except for catch people, lock them up and put them in jail. They do not reduce crime. In fact, the only thing that increases a police budget does, the only thing that buying more weapons or buying more equipment does. Is lead to more dead people. The only thing that building more jails does is lead to more people in cages. So I want to really refute, I want to refute and make sure it's clear that the police do not keep us safe. The Becky or Karen or whoever you want to call it that was on earlier saying that she's so concerned about her neighbor's cars being broken into. Guess what? We are in an economic crisis. If we were to prioritize our money and our resources. The way that we're supposed to.
That's your time.
Be breaking into cars.
Please wrap up, Monker.
Get this clear. Every day that people are homeless on the street and being harassed by the police. That's on you all's hands. Every day that someone's breaking into a car.
Monker, you need to wrap up, please. That's your time.
Every day that someone is experiencing domestic violence or sexual assault at home and not able to find alternative housing, that is on you all's hands. And we've seen it too much in this pandemic and we will keep coming for you all until these things are made right.
Right. Our next registrant is Jack Phillips of Mill Street in opposition to be followed by Natalie Scheinman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, I just kind of got on. Is there any turn on video or closed captioning or something for people who are hard of hearing?
Anyone who is hard of hearing can request those accommodations of the council office in advance of the meeting.
Okay, it seems like another hoop for them to jump through. But anyway, hi, I'm Jack. My pronouns are they and them. I am white and I don't feel protected by the police. I don't think that they should have the lion's share of the city budget. They have more than twenty million more than the fire department by the looks of this. I do, I guess I want to congratulate you on putting so many money towards some good things or proposing putting so many towards some good things. Three hundred fifty thousand for a pilot crisis response team in the fire department, four hundred fifty thousand for the office of the independent monitor. Four hundred thousand for COVID nineteen relief. Those all come from the Wisconsin State Journal article on the budget that you proposed. That amounts to approximately one point two million. Compared to a police budget of eighty eight point four million. When they requested eighty eight million. I do want to kind of like make a side note here, eighty eight has a place in Nazi numerology. With H being the eighth letter of the alphabet, eighty eight, the the number of millions of dollars that the police budget has requested. Stands for Heil Hitler. And I honestly don't think that that's a coincidence, seeing how. The police response has been this summer. Yeah, and some of the things that we're taking money away from to feed the police budget here. Libraries. Transit. Lifeguards. Reduced maintenance to the state street mall concourse. And as a lot of people have mentioned. Just continuing to neglect the houseless population in Madison. Over the summer, I was involved with a mutual aid effort. That was getting people the things that they need. Dane County Community Defense. It was a wonderful experience. I'm honored to have been organizing with those folks. And it really opened my eyes to the way that the city is failing to take care of its residents, its most vulnerable residents. There are people every night who don't have a place to sleep. There are people every day that don't have things to eat. And I don't know why we're funding, you know, new cop cars or whatever. Or salaries for people to walk around with guns in our community. Or to drive down my nice little street here in like military style armored cars. When there are people that are at this moment freezing outside. Cold as as the weather turns. Has only actually frosted once so far. It's going to get worse. There are people are going to die this winter and more people are going to die this winter than ever before. Because we are in the middle of a global pandemic. People are losing their jobs, people are going to be facing evictions eventually when the eviction moratorium is up. Yeah, this is not a city budget that reflects my morality. It's not something that I can abide. You need to do better. My union, mayor endorsed you in twenty nineteen. And honestly, at this point, I think that was a mistake. I have, I am on my union's political education committee. And I guarantee that if this budget goes forward, you're not getting the endorsement of the Teaching Assistance Association. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Natalie Scheinman of Third Street. In opposition to be followed by Lisa Yang.
Mayor, there is no Natalie, Lisa Yang is here. And then we do have a couple people also that were called earlier.
Okay, so Lisa Yang is next then.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I am a UW Madison student that has lived here for four years. I've seen how the hidden violence is here at UW, at Madison. And how officials, teachers, mayors, people mask the violence of black people and people of color here. I've heard people from Madison talk about how Madison isn't like Milwaukee, which is the city I'm from. But Madison does the same exact violence. Madison is a heavily militarized county, the same that y'all condemn in communist countries. Militarized violence has no specific system, but they all participate in genocides. So what Americans condemn with Rohingans, Jewish and other groups from other countries. Is the same type of violence that kills black indigenous people in this very own city, this colonial Madison. We know that you support this violence, which it's, when it's such an easy decision to create this agenda. That takes away spaces of joy and exploration like parks and libraries for children. But it's so hard for the city budget to defund the police department. These resources like parks, libraries and transportation help us survive. I actually think y'all need to invest more in these services rather than taking it away. For example, transportation is so ridiculous that when I think about how I can get to the other side of campus in so many different ways. But I can't to a grocery store outside of the campus when it's, and it takes a whole day trip. I imagine for the residents of Madison, that reliable and affordable transportation would allow parents, workers, families. To get to their own family safely and to do chores efficiently. You could even give jobs for reliable and affordable transportation. The fact that buses aren't free anymore is also messed up, especially when wages can't even guarantee rent. And people still need to go to work in this pandemic. You could be putting this money into housing for people without homes that go to libraries for warmth. I've gone to the public libraries and a lot of homeless people go there. So this money could be housing people instead of criminalizing folks. And I know y'all don't like to be called this, but I have to say it as it is. White supremacists have so much audacity to twist this narrative. And think that we would be okay with five percent being taken away from services that support us. We need the five percent that this. Agenda is trying to cut and more. Five percent is too little. The amount that that, that we have in these services, that money needs to be invested into libraries, into parks. Also, for people who think that police officers are suffering when cuts happen. You need to think about how people who work for buses, parks and libraries are the workers that actually are the ones suffering. But no, instead, white supremacists are upset when we call their authority asses out. White supremacists can never have enough. That's why they've enslaved people and that's why this. City council and so many other people continue to fund the police. And then that's basically it.
Right. And so Joe, do you want to take us back to folks that have come in late?
Yes, we have Benny Ramirez next. Sorry Benny, you may have to unmute yourself again.
I just want to not only reiterate the things that other folks out here have said. But I want to publicly shame anybody who thinks that putting eighty eight million into the desecration. Of black and brown bodies, putting eighty eight million into the police budget for the specific criminalization. Of homelessness. Anybody who thinks that is okay should feel ashamed of themselves. How do you live with yourself, knowing there are people out on the streets, knowing there are people. Who has fingers and toes are turning purple right now in this cold. And understand, and how do you go ahead and completely neglect the will of the people? To defund the police, to come together and understand that this isn't right. How? Shame. I'm gonna say that again, shame. How do you continue in this way? This life that we have created for ourselves is not sustainable. We have an opportunity here before us to fundamentally transform. The way that we see this city. Poverty is not managed by the police. Poverty is enforced by the police. Poverty does not arise out of poor decision-making. Poverty arises from the capitalist project. Pushing people into a wail of subjugation. This is not okay. This cannot keep going. We solve poverty by putting money into their hands. We solve poverty by opening doors for these folks. To better their lives for, we solve poverty by giving them a platform. To move on with their lives when they have been denied choice time and time again. There are so many things that you could do with eighty eight million. And while I understand that the structures are not currently in place to deal with some of the things. That the police currently deal with, there are so many better alternatives. That you just are frankly too lazy to investigate. How do you not understand that year after year, for hundreds of years, centuries. The police have brutalized black and brown communities. You have to willingly turn a blind eye to that history. To be able to live with eighty eight million for the police. Shame. Do something, do better. This isn't about values. This is about human rights. If you really want to think about yourself as a progressive, then how about we actually start progressing? Towards something. Do something. Put that money elsewhere. Libraries. How are you going to willfully deny access to information? To your constituents? Is that not the tenants of fascism? I don't understand how this budget even came to be before us tonight. I don't get it, folks. I really don't get it. What work do you think you're doing? What people do you think you're serving? There's, throughout this whole night, we have heard time and time and voice after voice that the people are opposed to this. And yet we're still here talking about this budget. No, this is not okay. And I'm frankly rather frustrated that we still have to be here. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield a, a.
Thank you, Joe. Who's next?
Larissa Joanna. And Larissa should be able to unmute by pressing star six on your phone. Looks like we can hear you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, um, yeah, I think everything has been said tonight. I mean, it's ridiculous. As a person of color, we're not going nowhere with this budget. Um, I keep hearing the excuses from the city that they have a contract where they're not supposed to or they're not able to defund the police. To me, those are bullshit as excuses, to be honest. We cannot, we cannot accept that. We need to put the, uh, people as priority. We cannot move on with that budget that it's not even cutting anything. But then, yeah, we have all these essential services getting defunded by 5% at the very least. Uh, this is ridiculous. We all need to get to work. Y'all need to arrest Matt Kenny. Y'all need to get rid of him. Y'all need to get rid of a lot of police officers that only keep criminalizing, keep, uh, brutalizing our communities and killing black bodies as well, black and brown bodies. Uh, it is ridiculous that y'all move forward with a budget without listening to all the voices that are opposing this strongly. It is ridiculous that y'all don't hear the pain, the protests out here in the streets. It is ridiculous that y'all don't hear and listen to the, uh, community that you're supposed to serve and to tell you that the police is not doing it. So please do your job. Do your job and don't move forward with this budget. That is ridiculous for the community. We need to bring back.
Larissa, I think we've lost you.
Yeah, it looks like we lost her. Okay, um, then, um, the last person we have is Natalie Scheinman, also on the phone. And Natalie, if you could press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I'm just going to echo what everyone has been saying last, I don't know, an hour and a half. Um, Wisconsin has the worst racial inequalities in the US. We have obviously endless work to do. Um, I know Madison is seen as a progressive place, but it's, um, it's a fraud. This budget is a huge start to, to, to starting to address all these issues. The budget as it stands right now is flawed. Um, listen to all these people that have been talking. And they're all, they're all saying the same thing. And I think they just want you to listen and invest in community. That's all the people are asking. It's the minimum and it's a start. Um, that's really all I have to say because I'm saying what everyone has been saying the last hour and a half. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, is there anyone else?
That's it.
Okay, so now are there questions for any of our registrants? Seeing none, I will recess the public hearing and, uh, President Carter, a motion to refer.
I move to refer.
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer. This item will next be at the Finance Committee on the 26th. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing none, that item is referred. And that brings us to item number nine. Which is Legisstar 61871, amending, um, MGO, um, section 28.053, which is the traditional residential planned district. And we will open a public hearing. We have no registrants. So we'll close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, that item is adopted. Item 10 is Legisstar 61929, amending sections of the MGO to create a new use electric vehicle charging facility and to require that future parking facilities are constructed to include a specified amount of elected electric vehicle capable and electric vehicle ready spaces. We'll open the public hearing. We have one registrant, Nicholas Davies of Richard Street, in support, not wishing to speak. Are there any questions of our registrants? Seeing none, we'll recess that public hearing. President Carter.
Move to refer.
Second to refer.
Moved and seconded to refer to the 11-9 Plan Commission meeting. Uh, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing none, that item is referred. That takes us to item number 11. Legisstar 62136, creating sections of the MGO to amend a planned development district at 6145 through 6301 Mineral Point Road. Open a public hearing. We have no registrants, so we'll recess that public hearing. President Carter.
Move to refer.
Second to refer.
Moved and seconded to refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing none, we record unanimous vote in favor and that item is referred. That brings us to item number 12. Legisstar 62139, creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning at 754 through 904 Felon Road. Uh, we will open a public hearing. We have one registrant, Lindsay Haggins of East Washington Avenue in support, available to answer questions, representing Simply Homes Madison. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. President Carter.
Move to adopt with conditions.
Second to adopt with conditions.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption with conditions? Seeing no objection, that item is adopted with conditions. And that brings us to the end of our public hearings tonight. And on to item number 15. Yeah, which is Legisstar 62645, allowing for the temporary establishment and regulation of a tiny house village at 1901 Aberg Ave. We have a number of registrants on this item, so we'll start there. Our first registrant is Jean Cox of Third Street in support, representing OM Village, to be followed by Lori Schwartz.
Jean is here on the phone. If you could press star six to unmute yourself. Jean, if you could press star six to unmute yourself. There we go.
Hello.
Go ahead, Jean.
Hi, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that I'm a, um, current resident. I've been a current, a resident for six years, almost six years of, uh, current tiny home village. And, um, and I meant to just register for questions.
Excellent. Well, thank you for letting us know, Jean, and, um, we'll come back to you if anyone has any questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so then our next registrant is Lori Schwartz of Birch Ave in support, wishing to speak, to be followed by Jeremy Ryan.
Um, my name is Lori Schwartz. I introduced myself before, so I'll jump into my comments. Is I, um, I sup- I support creative ideas and I think this is a creative idea. I want to speak to though that we should have this creative idea everywhere and that I don't want or hope that there will not be, um, I guess, uh, uh, for lack of a better term, maybe a reference to a ghetto, like a negative connotation, starting with anything that becomes them and us. Separation and isolation is the enemy. And, um, I am both encouraged and sad about a lot of the earlier testimony. Um, because I do know people are angry and this is one place, they have a place to be heard. And many places, um, people are shot for expressing their, um, opinion. I am, as a former police officer, a, 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 a woman who became a police officer, to do her best to do no harm. I believe that is the case of, of many, if not most, police officers. And to talk about categories of people in any way is, uh, something I think we as a society will grow in a democracy if we do, if, if we resist that temptation. Um, each situation is hard to judge on its own set of facts. And certainly, um, there have been murders by people in authority as police officers. And that is, um, wrong and needs to be held accountable. Um, but in regards to, um, working together, as I would love to continue to support all of you who are drained by the, um, uh, disparity and the despair of what to do when you have limited funds and money to make the difference that probably I would imagine each of you did in order to grow and come into government and to give your personal time late into the night and to everything that you do, is that, um, you don't want to feel that you're the enemy. Um, none of us do. I think the human condition is to say that some of the things we're doing are not working. And, uh, I think this is a, a, a wonderful idea if it's brought forward by people who support it. I just don't want it to become, um, a, a, a separate thing that becomes a certain area and that people then oppose that getting into any neighborhood. I think we've seen that isolation and separation and, uh, differences, um, oh, are only overcome when they are everywhere and where, when we have to integrate with each other. So I hope that tiny homes, um, will be.
That's your time, Lori.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jeremy Ryan of Odana Road, in support, to be followed by Timothy Jones.
Yeah, I just, uh, I wanted once again to reiterate that Jason Kloscher, the head of disability rights, uh, informed you, Mayor, that these videos.
Mr. Ryan, would you like to testify on this item or not?
You know what? I believe that my time is for me to say what I want to say. I believe that's what public hearings are for. I mean.
No, actually, you, you need to speak to the item before us.
You're very short with everyone. Is it just because they're not taking your side, Satya? Are you just mad that everyone's not taking your side?
Mr. Ryan, would you like to speak to this item or not? Because if you're not going to speak to this item, we'll move on.
I hope that one alder has the balls to actually say something, but I guess not. So you're all complicit. But yeah, I'll speak to the item. You know, how we treat our homeless community is absolutely ridiculous. The fact that we're, we even have to question whether or not to approve something that would help the homeless individuals is also ridiculous. Uh, we need, like I said earlier, homelessness is a public health crisis now. Clearly, you guys don't have it in your hearts to actually end the problem because it would have been done already. Been talking about this for how many years? But from a public health aspect, you have to allow the homeless all the avenues that they have, and we need to add more avenues. Yeah, uh, but the work that Occupy Madison has been doing has been phenomenal. Uh, I've, they've been, uh, just great at finding people houses, at building a stable community. Their, their first project went well, so I don't think there should be any question whether or not we should, we, we should build this, uh, this, this thing. Um, and, you know, some of the homeless people are disabled, so, you know, maybe they won't be able to hear this. But, or, but, uh, I really think that we should have their back as a city and there's no, no justification for considering anything other than allowing this to go through and, uh, hopefully expanding on it. And I'm sorry that you decided to take your personal grievances against me out on the disabled people, Mayor. But, uh, this will be changed soon. I will be sure of it. And, uh, it will be taken out of your hands. Thank you.
Our next registrant is Timothy Jones of Sherman Ave, in support, to be followed by Benny Ramirez.
Hello. Yes, I am, um, here in Madison now after a year, returned to my hometown. And since arriving, have been engaged in a variety of mutual aid assistance projects. I am an industrial engineer trained in ergonomics and have had the opportunity to interact since the beginning of this particular project with Occupy, as well as with some of the people who are tenting right now in the city. I have spent time directly interacting with quite a variety of individuals, working to assist them in the process of learning how to set up a tent and keep it weatherized as best possible in the winds and the rain, and now the cold. And I can strongly support the improvements that would be made by putting residents into these types of structures. I've been involved in the model development of one of these and find that it is very solidly thought through. It should be supported as a community in a variety of different places. And this as a great model of how it can be put together by a group that already has experience and speaks with wisdom about some of the social needs, getting this to be established and be functional. I will be there to support it in its development and the people who will be part of this. I can only say, at this point, I'm concerned for the individuals who are not well-suited to staying outdoors in the environment that they are currently in, in tents. I see the degradation of those materials and structures on a daily basis. I interact with those people now by first name, who are most likely in need and possibly will have the opportunity to get into some of these tiny houses. And I very much appreciate the opportunity to be involved. And if there are any questions, I welcome them. Um, you are in the nick of time, I must say, given what I see. And I appreciate your being willing to consider this as a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Benny Ramirez of Frank- Franklin Street, in support, to be followed by Megan Spielbauer.
Benny, you should have a prompt asking to be unmuted.
All right, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Cool. Well, I first want to say that this is a very succinct and timely initiative. I think that providing people without homes, and I'll say that again, people, people first, homeless second. The space to be able to start rebuilding after their interactions with the capitalist project is immense. It's recognizing that everyone has a fundamental human right to call a place home, to place their heads on a warm pillow and to not die in their sleep from the cold or from hunger. Now, the questions that I raise in the face of this project are, is this tiny home village going to be terrorized by the police like McPike Tent City is? Are they going to be faced constant harassment and vigilance like McPike currently faces? And I, and I really honestly want folks to think about that. Because then, are we really setting up a, a way for folks to escape homelessness? Or are we just managing the situation by putting it in a less visible area and then moving on with our lives? We can't keep doing that. We have to provide the resources. We have to come together to be able to do it. And we see that happening right now with mutual aid networks that are coming to support the homeless. But it shouldn't just come from outside. If we, what is the purpose of this government if not to serve its people? I have to sit here and remind you guys that you guys are not here gathered tonight to serve the almighty dollar. You are here to serve. You are here to serve people, people with rights, people with thoughts, people with their own imaginations and desires to live, create and breathe. I want you to center that in this vote tonight. I want you to center this idea that people deserve to live and to live free. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Megan Spielbauer in support of Carol Straight to be followed by Alexandra Wilburn.
Um, hi. Um, I just wanted to say, um, I really appreciated, uh, the previous person's comments. And I, um, I am in support of the tiny houses because I want to see, um, the people, um, the people experiencing homelessness have a space to be this winter. But I do, um, echo those concerns that I do not want to see this community become some, no, another overpoliced area where people experiencing homelessness are, um, being targeted by police or any, um, like city officials in that sense while they are trying to get on their feet. Um, Wisconsin decided that, or Madison specifically said that homelessness or housing was a human right. Um, a few years ago. I'm sorry, I'm in a student meeting and that is why that was their echo. I totally forgot that you can hear that. Um, but, um, I want, um, so housing is a human right. And I think that we need to be practicing that. And so I think this tiny house, um, community is a great solution for this winter. But moving into the future that we need to be also committed as a city to, um, a greater, wider Madison community, um, like plan for, um, creating spaces for, um, people currently experiencing homelessness to have a place and that people who are on the brink of experiencing, especially in the current economic crisis that we're having where, um, rents and, um, there is no stimulus package really coming and rents, um, are people's mortgages and rents are coming. Um, bills are continuing to come in, that, um, we actually have a safety plan for this people is that, at this point in this country, homeless, having homeless people is a choice. And, um, that we can change with policy. So I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Alexandra Wilburn of East Gorham in support to be followed by Brenda Conkle.
Uh, Alex is no longer here, but Brenda is.
Right, so Brenda Conkle of Hancock, Hancock Street in support, representing Occupy Madison to be followed by Kay Galuska.
All right, thank you. Um, so I wear many hats in the community, but tonight I appear as a member, uh, board member and co-president of Occupy Madison. And I want to start out by acknowledging that this project is highly unusual and very rushed. We're trying to do what most people told us was impossible. And we're asking a lot to make this happen. Um, this being 28 tinier heated houses with a building with showers, laundry, kitchen and bathrooms that will house 28 to 35 people currently sleeping outside over the winter. Um, and this is the temporary use. Uh, we want to make this happen by the end of the year. And we know we're asking people to bend in ways that are not customary and many have met the challenge. So that's not lost on us and we are so grateful. Um, we fully intend to apply with all the requirements in the resolution for the temporary use. Um, we will attend neighborhood meetings, go through the full planning process for the permanent use. Um, we're willing to meet with the neighborhood as many times as necessary. Um, and we hope to forge lasting relationships so we can be in close communication on an ongoing basis to resolve any issues that might arise in the future. Um, we hope to be an amenity to the neighborhood and, um, to be great neighbors as, um, we are at 304 North Third Street. Um, we're highly appreciative and impressed by those in City Hall who have worked so hard to make this temporary use happen so quickly. Um, and I know by and to name names, but I'm going to do it anyways. I really want to thank our friends who helped us with OM1 as well as OM2. Matt Tucker from zoning, Ed Rockricle from fire, George Hank from zoning, uh, from building inspection, Doug Vagely from public health and John Strange from the city attorney's office. Um, I know there's many other newer folks that have been working behind the scenes who I might not even know about. I really appreciate the folks in the mayor's office and the great advice that's been coming from the community development staff, particularly Lynette Rhodes. I also want to thank the elders who have worked to sponsor this. And last but not least, Alder Abbas for setting up the neighborhood meeting and working with us to make this happen so quickly. Um, I also have to thank the folks who have been living at the village for the last six years and have made it a model community and all the volunteers and supporters that have helped us. Um, and that will help us make OM2 a success. We're overwhelmed and thrilled with all the donations, volunteers and outpouring of support from the neighborhood and citywide. And we want to thank everybody, including so many city staffers who have been volunteering and have contributed to the project. We really appreciate it. Um, we do have one request for, for folks, if you don't mind. If you would like to nudge your counterparts, counterparts at the county board, um, to help us fund this project as a grant where we would own the property and not have the county own the property, that would be greatly appreciated. We'd really like to benefit from the, um, equity that we would have in the project and hopefully use that for future uses. With that, I don't want to make this seem like a done deal. Um, I do understand we have quite a bit of support and I'm super appreciative. So I'll just, uh, be available to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Kay Galuska of Mifflin Street in support to be followed by Lauren Byrne.
Kay is not here, but Lauren is.
Lauren Byrne of Sydney Street in support to be followed by Tyson Vitale.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, back again. On number eight about permitting, Bob, no, I'm on the, I'm on the call. Uh, I'm speaking in support of the permit for the tiny housing. And I think people have made some excellent points, uh, not ghettoizing this. It should be across our community. Um, I think also it's important that cultural norms be respected in that, um, again, thinking worried about the police and intervening on their own standards if they feel they're not being met. But most of all, I want to talk about the tiny homes as being the asset that they are. Well-designed by an architect, uh, my neighbor. Thank you very much. And, um, the principle of sweat equity should not be underestimated. That the residents of there have contributed to the construction and maintenance of their homes allows them to have more identity and more, obviously, ownership, whether, whatever the landing says. Um, and makes a chance to feel more worthy, stand taller, if you will. Um, learning skills by doing this. Uh, it, it's an end-to-end, um, good project and should be funded and spread around our community as an asset to us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Tyson Vitale of Dell Drive in support to be followed by Jesse Bellburn.
Hi, everyone. Uh, just wanted, or register in support of this item, strong support, um, especially during these, you know, trying times and during a pandemic, this is obviously really needed. I want to thank, uh, you know, Mayor Satya and, or Mayor Satya Ritz-Kanway, Alder Abbas, Alder Foster, Alder Evers and any other alders who are supporting this, uh, item. Uh, thank you guys for your, your support, uh, towards, uh, towards this, uh, and your sponsorship of it. And, uh, you know, um, we have a homelessness, homelessness issue that is just going to be getting worse, you know, during these times and of economic crisis and pandemic. So, um, thank you for stepping up and allowing this to happen. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Jesse Bellburn of Fourth Street in support to be followed by Fabio Mora-Arieta.
Uh, Jesse's not here, but Fabio is.
Right, so Fabio Mora-Arieta of Seventh Street in support to be followed by Janet Parker.
Can you hear me on the phone? Hopefully you guys can hear me.
Yes.
When I search such a, eh, nice, eh, experience and not so nice when the tiny houses were, eh, being built in near, near East High School. Eh, that's, I think, such an important part of the community. And eh, I don't know, it is, it is important that, eh, that get built. And, and we eh, not only can see it as, as helping the people living there, but eh, that so much joy that they bring to the community. When you walk around the neighborhood, you can see the different gardens that they built and the people just go there, buy them, plant their own tomatoes and they are spread all over the neighborhood. Eh, which is very nice and very lovely. Sadly, pushing back in time, I remember when that eh, eh, area was being discussed. Eh, that was an issue that the eh, zoning had to be changed. So there was a public hearing and people were speaking against and they were using such adorable arguments against that. But eh, there was just eh, fear being put on the table because right now we have lovely neighborhoods over here. And that will eh, eh, is a, is a proof of it. They, they go there, they work, people go buy their, their eh, furniture. It's, it's, it's a nice part. So hopefully eh, that gets approved, eh, let alone with the whole crisis and the issues with winter coming, COVID coming and, you know, unemployment coming. Eh, that they have to be hopefully not just that, but more solutions towards eh, eh, the eh, homelessness crisis and the unemployment crashes. But yeah, I, I of course support to eh, build more tiny houses and help more eh, eh, communities like that. Eh, because it's not a one-way street. It's not that we help them. There is no we, there is not them. They are part of our community. And, and it is, it is eh, a very nice result when we share eh, our, our different backgrounds with different, different people. And then we stop becoming them and us, but eh, only we. That's, that's it.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Janet Parker of Uppam Street in support.
Janet, you should have a prompt asking, there you go. Janet, you are unmuted. Janet, you're unmuted from our end. Um, do you have a, a separate mute on your, your headset or microphone? Doesn't look like Janet is there.
All right. Um, well, we do have a few folks, um, who are here as available to answer questions, um, including Rachel Neeson of Lakewood Gardens in support, Colleen Neary of Winnebago in support, and Larissa Joanna of Blair Street in support and Ed, uh, Edward Kuharsky of Sydney Street in support. Um, are there questions for any of our registrants? All right, seeing none. Um, can we get a motion, please? President Carter.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there any questions for staff? Alder Rommel.
Thank you, mayor. I don't really have questions. I think it's a, it sounds like a really good project. And thanks for everyone for getting it ahead of us. I would just like to be added as a sponsor.
We'll add Alder Rommel as a co-sponsor. Thank you, Alder.
Thank you.
All right, are there any questions or is there any discussion? Alder Herring to McKinney.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, a comment, and I remembered when the tiny houses were first introduced. I was at Madison Area Urban Ministry and there was a concern of the neighborhood that quote-quote, "those people were moving in." But that project, the sweat equity and what, um, what the people who were given the houses, it was just amazing. It was amazing to see people who were previous, previous, previously homeless and now had a place to call their own. That was amazing. And it was also amazing that the community embraced them as well. And so, um, I'd like to be added as a sponsor because these are the positive things that we can move toward. And of course, um, we are still facing, um, a lot of renters who will be experiencing, um, uh, a lot of challenges when the moratorium ends. But this is a step in the right direction and I'd like to be added as a sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Herring to McKinney. You'll be added as a co-sponsor. Alder Alberas.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to be added as a co-sponsor as well. Thanks.
We'll add Alder Alberas as a co-sponsor. Thank you, Alder. Alder Henick.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you very much to Occupy Madison. It's, it's a, it's so heartening to see when residents see an issue and go after it and, and figure out how to solve problems. So I just want to say thank you very much. I think it's fantastic what you're doing.
Thank you, Alder Henick. There, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing no objection, that item is adopted. And we will move on to item number 18, which is a presentation on, uh, performance excellence work. So... If we can get, uh, let's see, Deputy Mary Cradowitz. Let me find you, you should be unmuted now or have a prompt to unmute.
Hey, good evening. Um, I'm just green. Quick presentation for you all. You should have this as part of your, um, packet that you received, um, in the legislative file. And so I am just going to get this up on the screen. All right, so, hi, everybody. Um, Kara Cradowitz here. Um, this is the third quarter update for performance excellence. You may recall I was here, um, actually in person with you in early February to give the first quarter update in our 2020 work plan. Um, for those of you not familiar with performance excellence in depth, we really think of performance excellence as how we do our work to meet the mission of the organization, which is to provide the highest quality of service to the common good of our residents and visitors. Um, I have a slide here that's showing you what was presented to you in February as an 11-item work plan that we ambitiously set for ourselves um, in an attempt to really focus our efforts on how to improve our service delivery. Um, I did provide a written update for each of these items and I'm not going to go through them one by one. Instead, I will save time at the end for questions about specific projects, um, because there is a written update that you can all receive or you already have received, um, in advance of this meeting. Instead, I want to focus today on what really has been happening because with COVID, um, and reassignments, um, you know, at first I was reassigned, um, to serve under the Emergency Operations Center. And as the lead for a lot of this work in project management, um, some of that had to go on pause. And, um, in my most recent, um, assignment, I've been serving in an interim deputy capacity, still working on advancing the work of the Government Services Recovery Team. So for those of you who were at CCEC earlier today, um, we, you received a presentation from Adam Fost about the structure of the Funding and Recovery Team, which has six sub-teams. And he noted that some of these teams are repurposed teams. So the Government Services Recovery Team is really a repurposing of the Performance Excellence Transition Team. And we had really tried to focus our efforts to try to identify areas, um, that were already being implemented as, um, COVID response in an immediate-term context. And how could we take lessons learned in that context to help us plan forward in recovery? Um, with that vision in mind that we want to be building highest quality service delivery in our organization. So what you see here are the four, four areas I'm going to share with you that we've been focusing on. Change agenda, policy, communications and still performance excellence, um, as the, um, focus for government services. So I'm just going to walk through each of these one by one and then happy to take questions at the end. Um, so change agenda up first. So we really identified a problem in our organization that we have a lot of agendas for change, which is just a loose way of saying, um, there are multiple interdisciplinary staff teams within the organization who are trying to do really good work. Um, I think along the lines of, we have folks working on the 15-point plan, the multicultural affairs committee, neighborhood resource teams, our comp plan. Um, we have, uh, the racial equity and social justice initiative. We have a whole listing of these, um, teams that we're trying to currently inventory these initiatives so that we can have a comprehensive place for city staff and alders to be able to identify what is it that we are trying to accomplish in the organization in a change management context. Um, oftentimes staff are. Oftentimes, staff are promoting these um within their own silos, and what we really want to do is get those silos broken down so that um there's a single agenda for change that's searchable, and then in a long-term context, we'd like to start prioritizing collectively across these um citywide change efforts, so the impact is really looking at on the short term, that inventory, and in the long term, a prioritization of the change efforts within the city. The second team that we have is really focused on policy, and really, the problem being, we had so many agile changes that were implemented very quickly um when COVID first hit, and we are still in the process of trying to turn those policies and practices into institutional um policies in our APMs, um and so there's a team that's working on things such as telework um in the immediate term, what does telework look like, but also keeping in mind that telework may look different than it did pre-COVID once COVID has passed, um we're also working in ID policy, staff redeployment, working on the furlough APM that will be implemented um after the budget is adopted, um return to work, um and also, this team is looking at trying to, in the long term, also compile a comprehensive list of policies and timelines, so that the organization has a single point to systematically track the policy needs of the organization, because right now, they really live with the agency that owns the APM, instead of having a comprehensive place where we know this is the last day that a policy was updated, um and this will help us to move in a direction where we can systematically um update those as needed. In addition to policy, we have the communications subteam, and so I want to be clear that this is really internal communications, and I should be clear that it's really one person, um a member of our library staff who's been really helping out, serving as a part of the Joint Information Center, but also really working on um this team with myself and a series of department heads and a few staff to get a handle on what do city staff need to understand about COVID response and recovery, and keeping staff internally aware of all of the um the moving pieces of what's going on um internal to the city, so some of the things that we're working on right now are creating a message plan for the rest of 2020, so that we have weekly messages um that can go out, um and then supporting internal and external rollout of things such as the data dashboard that was previewed at CCEC earlier tonight, and our financial navigators program that's um being housed in the library in partnership with our community development division, um but then, we've also been communicating on things like telework and childcare, um when we knew that we were going to be staying remote through at least the end of the year, staff wanted to know how how much lead time am I gonna get before I have to come back into the office, and so we're really trying to keep up communications with folks, so that there's ample um time provided for all the childcare accommodations that may be needed for any return to work when the time is right for that. And finally, the last uh topic that we rotate through on our um weekly call um is related to performance excellence, and um you know, we really had at the beginning, or even pre-COVID, decided we were going to, in 2020, attempt to transition the performance excellence leadership team to the mayor's management team, and really have the management team own the functions of performance excellence in improving the quality of service delivery with a small sub-team of about five of us, really working as a transition team to make that a reality, and in um February, I had mentioned to you, we were going to do a plan-to-check act on that implementation, and while um the frequency of mayor's management team has increased um throughout the duration of COVID to about weekly, um we have yet to complete um our PDCA cycle on that um transition, and so we, as a team, will be revisiting that in the coming weeks to say, is this working, is this helping our organization get clearer on our aim, and helping us to improve um what we're really set out to do, which is provide the highest quality of service for the common good of our residents and visitors. And so I I do want to leave time for questions here, so if folks have specific things that they would like to um ask about the work plan as it was pre-COVID, or um about what I shared about the government services recovery team, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, are there any questions for Cara? Alder Herring to McKinney.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, um Cara, could you share with us when the city really started undertaking the uh performance excellence and the time period that got you from the start, and then to where you are today? Could you just do an overview, I I mean, I mean, high overview, I don't want you to get into the weeds, but I'm trying to really have a sense of when this started, and where you are now, and the time period that got you there.
Sure, um so actually, I've been with the city for five years, and I would say that in the duration of my time here, some form of performance excellence has been worked on, maybe not in this entire name, in name, performance excellence has really existed, I would say, since about 2017 to 2018, um but in my work here with the city, I um was the data projects coordinator and finance, and really helped to um work on the racial equity practices that we are trying to establish through Results Madison, and bringing about change in a data-driven context to implement outcome budgeting as a recommendation that came out of the 2014 strategic plan for the racial equity and social justice initiative that council adopted, and um my transition to performance excellence was really an opportunity um so that we could, personally, so that I could think more broadly on systems change context of how we do the transition in change management, Melissa Gumbhar had served previous to me in this role, and really helped define the new mission, vision, values, and service promise of our organization, which was really necessary to get our entire organization coalescing around um what we knew our aim was, and knowing that, um we had to start thinking about the how we were going to improve our service delivery with that vision of our Madison inclusive, innovative, and thriving in mind, um and so we've we've slowly identified projects, I came into my role in the performance excellence specialist, um I was serving in both capacities from July through September last year, and then full-time from um from September until I became the interim deputy in July, and so I've been serving as interim deputy since then, and still working in a performance management or performance excellence context in this capacity as well, so um it's been an evolution um over the five years that I've been here, but I do see um threads of what has been performance excellence predating called strategic management still alive in the performance excellence system, and um I'm excited to do work planning for next year and figure out what we can tackle.
Does that answer your question, Alder?
Um, yes, it does answer my question.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Cara? All right, seeing none, thank you, Cara. All right, and that will take us to item number forty-six, which is Legistar six zero six eight three, approving the preliminary plat of Ramish Farm develop prop uh, excuse me, Ramish Farm Development at four thousand to forty-one fifty Packers Ave and forty-two oh one North Sherman Ave. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Lori Schwartz of Birch Ave.
Thank you, um I'd like to wear a different hat uh to speak to uh the Ramish Farm Development. I was in a uh meeting that was coordinated by the Northside Planning Council uh about developments, and as an individual who has um succeeded in life in no small part due to um team sports and opportunities and skills in life that were gained there, um I believe they can be gained in many things outside of sports, not a sports fanatic, but sport sports is a tool, I believe that I would like to speak to the concerns of um as developments are made to increase the thoughtfulness about um space for children and children to play in their own neighborhood, and so I believe um there was some conversation about this uh in in that meeting, and that some developments discuss it and some don't, um I think it's essential, um especially as we look at gender equity uh in this day and age, for um space to be such that it's accessible uh for uh girls and boys, and that it not just be a basketball hoop, but that it be play space in many ways, and I I know that sounds like a simplification, I'm not trying to get into the specific details, but in general, um I hope we move to tiny gyms, that we move to what McFarland does, where they're taking our residents, and they have a tiny gym in their own um neighborhood on Seagull Cow, we should have that for our residents in every development, so that kids can be safe, parents cannot worry in this day and age, and that their kids can be close at hand, um and their ability to bike, to exercise, to get around, that that needs to be in the plans, and um I appreciate that, I think this development had some of that, I I I don't feel I know it well enough, I'll defer to the elders who who do know much more about it, but I want to uh start speaking up about that, because uh we don't, we have very um disparate uh access to healthy activities in the neighborhoods for children, um for multiple reasons that we need to continue to improve, and I'm grateful for the city continuing to work on those issues, and for the elders uh bringing those issues up, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. We have no other registrants on this item, are there any questions for Lori? All right, seeing none, um President Carter, a motion, please.
A motion to re-refer.
Vice President Abbas?
Second.
Moved and seconded to re-refer, um is there any questions for staff or any discussion? All right, seeing none. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing none, we will re-refer that item. All right, um our next item is fifty-five, it's a little bit after nine PM, is there Vice President Abbas?
Motion to re-uh recess for five minutes.
A five-minute recess has been a-
Ten minutes, okay.
Ten-minute recess has been moved.
I second, I was gonna correct that, but I second ten minutes.
All right, so moved and seconded to recess for ten minutes, uh is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of a ten-minute recess? Seeing no objection, um we will take a ten-minute recess, it is now nine thirteen, we'll back at be back at nine twenty-three. It is now 9:13. We'll be back at 9:23. And I will ask staff to please mute themselves as I unmute everyone and ask Kirk to call the roll.
I have my actual roll call sheet this time, so I'll do this in order. Alder Rummel?
Present.
Alder Skidmore? Alder Tierney?
Present.
Alder Revere?
Here.
Alder Abbas? Alder Alboras?
Present.
Alder Balday?
Yes.
Alder Bidar?
Here.
Alder Carter?
Present.
Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Furman?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Pennick?
Present.
Alder Kimball?
Here.
Alder Lumber?
Here.
Alder Martin?
Here.
Alder Prestajakamo?
Here.
And Alder Abbas?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, we are on item number 55, which is Legisstar 61417, creating sections of the MGO entitled City Boundaries, attaching properties located at 4825 North Sherman Ave, 2023 Wheeler Road that are currently in the town of Burke and amending sections of the MGO to assign a temporary zoning of agricultural district. We have a number of registrants on this item, starting with William White of Lakeland Ave in support, representing Cherokee Country Club to be followed, excuse me, and Dennis Tiziani, to be followed by Allison Lindsay Morris.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ah, good. Excellent. Actually, we're actually on the same page as Alder Kimball, all things considered. What we're doing is we're approaching the transfer of jurisdictional privilege from annexation to the actual assignment of property through this particular process. This has been a process which has been a long time coming. It's been approved by the city and we're just at the stage right now of trying to take it across, take the ball across the goal line. The rub is whether or not the school district is included in this particular allocation. And the answer is no, it's not. Because 30 years ago, the city, the state of Wisconsin decided that school districts would be treated differently than the annexation is treated and is the transfer of jurisdictional power. So right now, we're right at the point of taking the property from the town of Burke into the city of Madison. It is in no way inconvenient for the transfer of the school district boundaries. It is, in fact, very, very similar. And we're, quite frankly, we're with Rebecca Kimball, Alder Kimball, on the whole idea that the kids that grow up here shouldn't have to go to DeForest. They should go down the street. And we think that that's exactly the way it should be. Now, she has embarked upon a situation where the allocation of-- of the emphasis is on the inclusion of the transfer of the school district, but it isn't by statute. By statute, it's totally distinct and different. And I'm not saying that you wouldn't be successful in arguing this before the state, but you would have to go to the state to actually do it. That being said, the city of Madison is 100% behind this particular transfer. We have done it in the past. We have, in the Parks Department, approximately a little less than around 35 acres, something more.
That's your time?
I'll make it very quick. The Parks Department needs this land to be in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Allison Lindsay Morris of Comanche Way in opposition to be followed by Marsha Cannon.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So my concern is about the school districting because the property is in the DeForest School District where Northside Madison Schools are nearby and have capacity. And so I think it would be unwise to annex this land while the taxing jurisdiction is still DeForest. And I understand a deal is being negotiated for a land swap between MMSD and the DeForest School Districts. So I asked the common council to please wait until that's done and the land is in the MMSD DEX district before it's annexed. So that land, so before you annex the land, so that any children who might go into any development on this property can go to the nearby schools instead of being bused to DeForest or Windsor. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Marsha Cannon of Cherokee Circle in opposition, wishing to speak.
Hello, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Ditto what Allison said. It only makes sense to have the school district issue settled so that, I mean, there is a proposal on paper that's gone before the Urban Plan Commission, I'm sorry, Urban Design Commission. And, you know, there's a plan out there for 315 units of residential units. And before any of that gets considered, we really need to have the school district in Madison. It's right next, or, you know, within a very short distance of Lakeview School. So I urge you to postpone annexation until the school is settled.
Thank you. That is our registrants on this item. Are there any questions for any of the registrants? All right, seeing none, then President Carter, a motion?
Moved to place on file without prejudice.
Second.
Moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice. Alder Kimball.
Thank you. So for a number of meetings now, this item has been on our agenda and we've been referring it pending this resolution of the school district issue. I just heard today from MMSD and DeForest that they have identified a parcel that they're willing to swap between the two districts. And, you know, they just need to go through the legalities of it, of getting their boards to approve, getting their lawyers to approve and getting their boards to approve. So, but in the meantime, the city attorney's office advised me that we couldn't refer this any longer because there is an agreement between Cherokee Park, Inc. and the city. And it's, you know, about timeliness of a decision on this issue once a petition is filed. So that's why it's, I was hoping we could, you know, just keep referring it until the resolution happened, you know, by our next meeting or perhaps one in December at the latest. But the city attorney advises us, we have to vote on it. So that's why my recommendation is to place this on file and they can bring the petition back, you know, at the next meeting or the one following when the school district issue has been resolved. I think it's not responsible of us as a city to annex land that we know would be, would subject the families who live on there to some very bad social isolation. You know, Lakeview School is close, but Gompers and Blackhawk is even closer to this property. And, you know, to have 315 families socially isolated and separated from their nearby neighbors by virtue of being in different school districts. And this one proposal for this property involves moderate income families, moderate and, you know, where they're talking about 60 to 80% AMI housing, putting the onus on them to drive to Windsor for all of their children's school-related things. It's just, it doesn't make sense. And, you know, as Bill said, yeah, I've spoken with him and Dennis Tiziani about this. They agree that doesn't make sense. So I am just asking that we don't make a decision on this until the successful conclusion of the school district land swap, which should be within weeks.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff? Or is there any discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to place on file without prejudice. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, the item is placed on file without prejudice. And that takes us to item number 58, which is Legisstar 62508, a resolution calling on UW Madison administrators to make changes to the smart restart plan. We have a number of registrants, starting with Matthew Mitnick of Brook Street in support, to be followed by Katie Hepler.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matthew and I'm also the ASM Chair for this session. And I first want to thank Alder Prestajakamo for writing this resolution. And I think it comes at a time when it really couldn't be needed more than ever. And I just first wanted to draw attention to the fact that Becky Blank, the chancellor, met with several Alders about this resolution before she's even met with the BIPOC coalition on campus and a number of other student groups who've been trying to get her audience. And I think that says a lot about where the priorities of this institution and administration lie. And in fact, Becky Blank was supposed to be at our last student council meeting, but when she found out that the BIPOC coalition was going to be presenting, she backed out. And, you know, going, I want to focus more on this resolution. And I think this says what so many students are thinking. And we're really looking to you all, our leaders at the city, to be that voice for us that our administrators aren't doing. And I have to say, as someone who's been involved in a number of these conversations with administrators in shared governance, it truly is concerning to me that the student voice has been ignored and denied in almost every conversation. In fact, within three days of the elections for ASM leadership, we released a statement in support of a moral restart. And none of our requests have even been really considered, whether that be worker continuity, whether that be online classes or making residence halls safe so that only students who need the residence halls due to financial and family considerations can have them. And I don't want to go on and on, but we as students have been speaking out for several months now. And in meetings, we're constantly being gaslit or being outright denied of how we're feeling and what we want to see. And a question that we've been asking for probably a month and a half now is what are the plans for the spring? And we have no answers to that. I spoke at the county board when Supervisor Hassel introduced this very similar legislation to this, expressing how I was concerned about the spring semester planning and how it would be safe for students. And Vice Chancellor Reeser was in that meeting. And I understand she's in this meeting too. And I've asked this probably three or four times. And either the administration has no plan what to do when students come back from winter break or they're hiding it from students and from other shared governance partners. A couple of things I wanted to mention is there's no contact tracing in classes. I'm someone who has two in-person classes myself, so there's no way to know if somebody in my class who gets COVID-19, that can be traced so that we can remain safe. And also-- Oh, it's my time. Thank you.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next registrant is Katie Hepler of Division Street in opposition to be followed by Jeffrey Weisner.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for your time. And before I provide my remarks, I do want to say this is my first council meeting and I have huge respect for everybody on this council for your time and what you do for the city. So thank you on that part. But as a proud UW alumna and Madison resident, it is crucial that instead of laying down orders, the city of Madison officials should work collaboratively with UW Madison administrators to find solutions that are going to support both the current and future economic plight of our city. We need to work together and a collaborative effort is going to bring about more creative solutions. I mean, I think, you know, it's very clear-- I mean, I think, you know, it's very clear with the economic risks that Madison businesses and the city face in this current shutdown that we are in as it comes from revenue from state, from sales taxes or income taxes. And our downtown area consists largely of small businesses that were crushed with the safer at home and this summer with all the riots that were taking place. And by removing students and any activity that's a heartbeat of our downtown, it's going to halt business and create greater losses and closures. So when thinking through this and preparing my remarks, I did some research on my graduate alma mater, New York University, to see how they were handling the situation. Because to me, if they can handle it, I certainly think Madison can. And in quick summation, they are conducting daily testing on students, faculty and staff, checking to see how they're feeling with quizzes through their phone, through saliva tests on a weekly basis. And they are able, within these ongoing daily tests, to keep their rate below 1%. And this is providing them predictability and ability to manage where outbreaks are starting to bubble up. So for example, last month, they had a residence hall that had six cases come up out of 400. They were able to lock down the building, get those quarantined who were positive and any of those who had been exposed to the students. So efforts like this have allowed NYU in collaboration with their government and with the Langone Medical Center that's affiliated to conduct 93,000 tests since April 1st. I'm sorry, August 1st. And all those tests, only, not even 400 have come up positive. And what this means for us is, for them, their businesses are able to continue to operate in highly dense campus neighborhoods. And we have similar situations here in Madison, obviously not on the density level, but in the vibrancy that our local businesses have with the university. But what we have that is a huge advantage, in my opinion, is that Madison strives to create an inclusive culture. And I feel this is in our DNA. We have the same time. Thank you.
That's your time. Thank you. Next registrant is Jeffrey Weisner of Highlands Ave in opposition to be followed by Benny Ramirez.
Thanks, everybody. I am also UW alum and I do a fair amount of volunteering on campus through the Alumni Association, the Foundation and the College of Engineering. I want to say at the outset, I appreciate everything that the council is doing to try to keep the community safe. This is clearly an unpredictable and unprecedented time. And there's no easy roadmap for how to manage through COVID-19. However, in my opinion, the University of Wisconsin leadership has done the best job possible to limit exposure to the virus while still operating a large and diverse university. Have they been perfect? No. But there is very, very few people that could stand up and say their decisions in this environment of tremendous unknowns have been perfect. I think it's unrealistic to shut the university down and go fully virtual on classes and send every student home. Most students live in off-campus housing. Most did not go home over the summer when they could have. And all of them came back to campus knowing the current COVID virus environment was in place. They work here, their friends are here, they want to be here. And closing the dorms as a singular step only impacts about 20% of the student population. So looking at the dashboards, the current positivity rate of students on the UW campus is below 1% when the rate of around the state and the nation is significantly higher. So we would in fact be sending students home to areas of higher, not lower, rates of infection. And at some point in the future, then bringing them back to campus. Bottom line, in my opinion, is that the students want to stay in Madison to live and to learn. A shift to virtual learning or a city council resolution is not going to make a difference on where they are. They're still going to be here. So rather than issue a kitchen sink resolution, I would strongly encourage the City of Madison to continue to work cooperatively with campus leaders to find ways to keep UW students and Madison residents safe and keep students engaged in continuing to earn their UW degree. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Benny Ramirez of Franklin Street in support to be followed by Megan Spielbauer.
Hello. Just wanted to say thank you again. I'm registered in support of this resolution primarily as the fact that I would love to see a more direct and sustained line of communication between the City of Madison and the university. As a student who decided to take the year off due to the health risks associated with being on campus in person, I would, again, encourage both the UW system and the city to rethink the way that we have managed COVID. I mean, right now, we're in the midst of being the epicenter of the US's outbreak due to six, seven months of inaction from state legislature. That alone is abhorrent and out of our control, but it only serves to further demand of us as a city to come together and create these creative solutions that a fellow citizen was mentioning. Yeah, that's what's being asked of us at this time. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Megan Spielbauer of Carroll Street in support to be followed by Allison Bellburn.
So, yeah, I'm a student here at UW and I am in support of Agenda Item Number 58 because I actually am a member of the BIPOC Coalition and I've been severely disappointed by our university's response to speaking with student orgs like my group, as well as other well-established BIPOC organizations on campus, as well as with TAA and other graduate programs who are the people who are on the ground. I think a lot of these decisions, we're talking about cooperation between the city and the university. And a lot of these decisions that the university has made have been very top-down and without working with faculty, with academic staff, with the essential workers that make this university run, as well as the students. And I think that having the city come in and take a step to really voice the concerns of students and other people living in the Madison area who are affected by these decisions that the university makes is extremely important. Just to kind of express a student perspective, I know from speaking with faculty members that they have been discouraged from teaching hybrid classes. When we had that spike at the beginning of the semester, we switched to temporarily online for a course that I was meeting in person. And that faculty member sort of expressed that they were discouraged from doing that, from having both in-person and then having it being streamed to students who felt uncomfortable. And I thought that that was atrocious. And I could tell that while they did not say it from their body language and their emotions, that they were uncomfortable going into spaces, especially for BIPOC faculty and students who are, we all have seen that BIPOC are disproportionately affected by COVID due to systemic and institutional racism. That to force BIPOC faculty and students and staff back into settings where they're increasing their risk for no reason without offering income continuation for student workers and other workers during times when it's possible, or during pauses in, like high increases in cases and spikes when the university goes into more closed down, is just pointing to how unsupported some of these residents have been. And some of the members of the Madison community that we talk about in On Wisconsin and we keep seeming to be purporting in the media, but it's not actually having that support. And also to point to, I know that people are talking about us being back on campus, is that I could spend so long expressing how students have not been supported during this time. And I recognize that we are not the only group, but it has been very difficult to be a student in a time when there are, we're losing part-time work or the facing the decision between paying rent and having to go to jobs where we are almost always being on that essential worker-staff line and seeing also tuition increases, as well as seeing now just like the return of football. And I'm kind of jumping because I want to make sure I get all of this in because I really want the
Those three minutes? That's my minute.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next registrant is Allison Bellburn of Mifflin in support to be followed by Lauren Byrne.
Allison, looks like you have to unmute on your end. You are unmuted, Allison.
Thank you.
We can barely hear you, Allison.
We cannot hear you, Allison.
I think my phone's not going to do this. Thank you, though.
Try turning your volume up.
How about now? Is that better?
It's a little better, yep.
Okay, I'm asking you to support this. Obviously, we need to do more about COVID. Pretty out of control around here and the university has blood on their hands at this point. I think this is a no-brainer. I'm not even sure if I need to convince you guys. So I really would like to take this time to talk more about how we can convince you that investing in health rather than police is the best look right now. But I know you've been hearing about that all night. When you have this many people all picking up saying the same thing, hopefully that's a big message to you. So let's invest in health, let's invest in safety, let's get rid of COVID, let's do something about it, let's not invest in the police. Thank you, guys, for your time. I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Lauren Byrne of Sidney Street in support to be followed by Brenda Gonzalez.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, I support 58 and I support a more historical and global perspective on this pandemic than is being expressed often in the US and locally. It's impossible for me to believe that selfishness and power mongering that leads to opposing and overturning reasonable steps to try to control the pandemic occur and that they're tolerated. A gentleman that was speaking said, let's face it, the students want to be here, their friends are here. He had some good points as to whether the students should remain based on data, but that comment initiated his comments is so, again, ahistorical. We had a pandemic in 1918 and little toddlers, there was no question, you went up out in a mask. You did whatever you could, which is very limited, to protect yourself and the rest of the world. So all I want to say is, when you're out and when you hear somebody or you yourself feel like, I can't stand these restrictions, it's the least you can do, sometimes it's the most you can do, and it makes an enormous difference. POTUS 45 is responsible for so many deaths globally. We don't want to be part of that. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Brenda Gonzalez in opposition of Capital Ave to be followed by Catherine Harlan.
Thank you. Buenas noches. My name is Brenda Gonzalez. I am the Director of Community Relations of the University of Wisconsin-Madison and I'm speaking in opposition. Also joining me for this meeting are my colleagues Lori Reeser, Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs, Charlie Hoslett, Vice Chancellor of University Relations, Tricia Nolan, Assistant Vice Chancellor of University of Marketing, Jake Baggett, Associate Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs and Executive Director of University Health Services, Gary Brown, Director of Campus Planning. They will help me answer some of the questions you may have after my statement. Also hope that you had the opportunity to review the letter I shared earlier with all of you today. The University of Wisconsin-Madison and the City of Madison share the goal of limiting the spread of COVID-19 and protecting the health and well-being of all the members of our community, our Madison community, including UW students. It is no secret that cases spiked at the university earlier in the semester. Because of our extensive testing, we identified this problem quickly. We responded with a number of interventions, including asking students to restrict their movements, pausing face-to-face instruction for two weeks and quarantining two resident halls. Our two-week pause allowed us to bring the case countdown significantly. Our campus positivity rate has been below approximately 1% for almost three weeks, below Dane County's rate and far below the state rate. Since early September, we had double the number of campus contact tracers, double the number of campus contract tracers, and are committed to conducting all contact tracings for all UW students and employees. UW contact tracers are now assisting public health Madison and Dane County because we have more than needed at the moment. Thus confused by the language in the resolution calling on UW to expand the current testing and contact tracing capacity of UW Health Services. We have reduced the concentration of students in the residence halls, encouraging voluntary departures and allowing more students to move into single rooms. Resident halls are now down to 70% of their capacity. A one-size-fits-all teaching model called in the resolution also does not work, nor it is equitable, particularly for freshmen and for lower-income, first-generation and students of color. Having in-person connection and experiences is very important. We have closely tracked on-campus cases and have found no infections transmitted from student to employees in classrooms or lab settings. Meanwhile, cases not assisted, not associated with the university have significantly increased in Madison and Dane County, even while UW-associated cases have fallen. While some have, without good evidence, tied the concerning rise in cases across the state to college campuses, a close look at data from every county in Wisconsin shows that cases have been on the rise since September 1st, regardless of whether those counties are home to a college or university campus.
That's your time, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Catherine Harlan of Chalet Gardens in support to be followed by Larissa Joanna.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I, first of all, want to say just I've been here since the beginning of this meeting. And so I feel like I have some small idea what you guys go through. And I just want to thank you for giving everyone the time to speak, you know, even though it's clearly taking up a lot of your night. So I just wanted to take a minute to speak to my personal experience. And I want to be careful because UW Madison has been very, very good to me. I'm an alum. I love and respect the school and have been proud to call myself part of its community. But right now, I also, I'm a staff member who works with freshmen and I'm lucky enough to not be in person myself, but I have students who are. And I feel like I'm seeing my students under pretty unprecedented amounts of stress. I feel like they, I've gotten the impression that they don't feel they're being adequately supported. And as someone who cares about education, I'm concerned for my students. I worry about whether I am fulfilling the duty I feel I have to at least offer, to offer them what kind of care I can. And if not, that at least to not be part of anything that might endanger them. And as a citizen of Dane County, I worry for the people who don't get a say in whether the, like, students, whatever else can be said, do get to choose whether they're on campus or not. But the citizens of Dane County don't get to choose whether the school is open and they clearly also are at risk. So, yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Again, I respect the school very much and thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you. Next registrant is Larissa Joanna of Blair Street in support to be followed by Anthony Flynn.
There's no Larissa or Anthony.
Right. Then how about Tiffany Verag of Ross Street in opposition?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and older people, for taking time this evening and also for hearing everybody in this meeting. It's very interesting to me. I've never attended one of these so far. So anyways, I am a minority small business owner on the Capitol Square. I've been seeing patients throughout this pandemic as a hands-on manual physical therapist who typically sees patients for 45 to 60-minute appointments, currently with full PPE. Since March, I've only had one student contract COVID and that was over the summer. Since school started, majority of my cases Since school started, majority of my caseload, about 90% of it consists of college students, zero of who have contracted COVID. I want to point this out because I'm treating who you deem to be the source of high-risk exposure and the problem with COVID numbers in Dane County. However, if students were the problem with Dane County, surely I would have students, student patients testing positive, and myself or other patients surely would have likely contracted it due to the line and exposure of the work that I do. However, zero students I am working with have contracted COVID since the university has opened and called students back to Madison. Additionally, since the lockdown, many businesses are operating 25% to 50% capacity on a good day. If you were to remove all the students from Madison, this would surely be the death of so many businesses. Minority-owned businesses like the Short Stack or the Old Fashioned, both of whom have had filed GoFundMes to stay afloat. And while mine also relies on the student body being present, it's been sustainable even at limited operating limits. However, it won't be if the students aren't here. You would be sending the student spending and consumerism to other communities and states. Also, to not be discredited, the university would be first to furlough more employees as students would not be residing in university-based services. Many students already chose to take a gap year or stay home until classes fully resume in person. The economic fallout of this decision would be devastating for our community, which is already seeing record homelessness, unemployment, and many other economic disasters related to the COVID pandemic. I would also like to point out that the current cases in Dane County are made up of very few positive student cases and have been since Selly and Woody were put on lockdown. Additionally, the reason why local hospitals such as UW Hospital is at that capacity, according to my friends who work there, is because the rural hospitals can't support the level of critical care needed by COVID patients, not because of student cases. I can assure you that I've seen plenty of unhealthy COVID behaviors on the part of adults within our community. Blaming the students and further compromising their education is an unreasonable approach. Sending them home will have devastating and
That's your time. Our next registrant is Gregory Galumbiak of Jennifer Street in support.
Hello, I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but I just learned about this resolution, so I'm speaking extemporaneously. I'll start just by reading something I posted on Facebook tonight. Quote, "Since I work on campus and have a number of health conditions, severe asthma, et cetera, that increase my risk for severe COVID, I made an accommodation request of UW Madison as provided for under the Americans with Disabilities Act, asking for a number of accommodations to reduce the risk. Some of the accommodations would have been quite easy to implement, for example, reducing elevator capacity in my building, arranging for frequent COVID testing of my lab members, et cetera, while others would have been more difficult to implement. I provided ample documentation, including of the disabilities, and the scientific validity and feasibility of all the accommodations requested. That included a letter from my doctor saying that each of the accommodations requested should be implemented. UW denied every single accommodation requested, blew them off 100%. That tells you a lot about how the UW is handling COVID. They don't really care if people die. The UW bureaucrats, such as disability coordinators, are paid just to shuffle paper with the pretense of doing something. They'll smile at you, utter words as though they care, then blow you off to the max. The reopening plan has been a debacle. It's responsible for a huge increase in the number of COVID cases in Madison. As a headline noted a week ago in the Wisconsin State Journal, more than 3,000 UW Madison students have contracted COVID by this point. A study by Gunderson and O'Clair traced deaths in the community to the reopening of UW campus there. I'm sure you'd find the same thing here if there were genomic analysis. UW testing capacity is insufficient. People in my lab have sought to get tested, have often had to wait for several days for an appointment. Some of the initial testing sites were closed, so there's no testing in the west side of campus for people who aren't driving. Some people from my lab have talked about having to wait in long lines of students who are getting tested, creating a perfect environment for transmission. Multiple scientific studies have unambiguously shown that for safe university reopening, universities should test the entire campus community at least twice a week. Multiple schools are doing this, including University of Illinois. Many schools on the east coast, like Cornell, Princeton, et cetera. I advocated for this at the UW. It's perfectly feasible here. The UW has flatly refused to do this. The two elevators for the building in which I work are labeled with "smart restart" signs. One of the elevators is six feet across. It states that the elevator capacity is five people, and the people should stand six feet apart. The second elevator is about three feet across, and the sign there says the smart restart capacity is two people, and they should maintain six feet of distance. Apparently, the smart restart planners can't do simple math. I'll add, for those who might not know, I worked in the field of virology for two decades, so I'm not speaking out of ignorance. I'll add that with regard to UW officials and some other people you're hearing from, the old saying is applicable. It is difficult to get a man to understand something when his salary depends on his not understanding it. Please pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a number of folks available to answer questions. Lori Reeser of Lincoln Drive in opposition, representing UW Madison. Sean Pfaff of Schuman Drive in Fitchburg in opposition, representing the Department Association of South Central Wisconsin. Charles Hoslett of Colony Drive in opposition, representing UW Madison. Rachel Neeson of Lakewood Gardens in support. Jake Baggett of East Campus Mall in opposition, representing UW Madison University Health Service. Gary Brown of Mills Street in opposition, representing UW Madison. And Colin Neri of Winnebago in support. Sorry, Gary Brown was in opposition. Colin Neri is in support. And Margaret Bergamini of Few Street is in support. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Alder? Presto Jacomo questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this might be for Jake Baggett, actually. Anyone can answer. Previous speaker tonight mentioned, sorry, a previous speaker
Although, let's just confirm, is Jake Baggett here? Tech staff?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Alder.
Yeah, so a previous speaker mentioned that UW Madison wasn't doing contact tracing in in-person classes and smaller classes. I was hoping you could clarify a little bit about what that classification is. I know there's, it doesn't consider it a close contact, if I believe? And could you clarify to talk about, you know, if you guys are testing in that situation? Or, sorry, contact tracing?
So, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for that question. We actually look at every positive case that occurs on the campus or connected to the campus, and we specifically identify, you know, based on CDC criteria, who would be considered in close contact. And that's going to vary from circumstance to circumstance. The normal protocols in the classroom are that people would maintain physical distance protocols, as well as wearing face coverings and so forth. That, and we believe that that's being very, very widely honored and complied with. As a matter of fact, in our case investigations, we found no evidence of transmission occurring within the classrooms. So, but in each case where we investigate those claims, it's up to the person to share with us who they may have identified as being their close contacts as well, as well as evaluating through an extensive interview process, who might be classified in that status. So I would argue, suggest that we are actually doing a very extensive investigation of all situations that we become aware of and are particularly concerned about circumstances like the one that you described that the speaker spoke to earlier. So that we can make sure that what we're doing is having the right effect and is identifying any concerns. Hopefully, that's an answer sufficient for you.
Thank you. Sorry, I muted myself. Yeah, that was great. I have one more question, and I think it might be for Vice Chancellor Lori Reeser. So I'm hoping you could, I'm hoping you could speak to, you know, I guess this is pretty, I'll just say it. Have you guys done surveys for students and faculty, and if so, could you elaborate on what those were? Because, you know, lots of people saying this is what the students want, so I'm just curious.
Sure, thank you for your question. My understanding is that the university committee or the faculty senate have sent out a faculty survey to get feedback from faculty. Last week, a survey went out from Human Resources to all employees, asking for their feedback. That'll be the second survey that's gone to university employees, asking for their feedback. And we're in the process of finalizing a student survey as well. In fact, that was really based on some of the feedback that we got from ASM because they had requested, and we're talking about doing a student survey. So we have partnered with a number of departments on campus and sought feedback from students. And I believe that survey is set to go out hopefully this week. So we've not received that feedback yet, but we've involved students. From the minute the pandemic hit, students have been involved in many different ways in terms of providing feedback of how we were going to operate classes, to give feedback of how classes would actually work. We did tests this summer where we had students go into classrooms, and we would practice the different teaching methodologies to make sure that students could hear and that it worked. And there's been a number of student opportunities to provide feedback and input throughout the entire process.
Okay, I guess I kind of have a little bit of a follow-up question to that, actually. Since I know COVID has, you know, I was a student in, back in spring, COVID kind of screwed up the whole, I would say, student voice just for everyone, and so I know ASM didn't actually have inaugurated or sitting leaders aside from a few. And maybe you don't even have the answer to this, but could I ask who exactly, other than Laura Downer, who is the chair, you guys were working with?
Sure. Laura Downer was the, I'm not sure the right words of it either, but she was the holdover chair, I guess, throughout the entire summer. So we absolutely worked with her, and she was consulted. I have a group called the Cabinet of Student Leaders, so that's a group of about 20 student leaders from various student organizations on campus that I meet with and continue to meet with throughout the summer. So they were consulted. But really, there was also instructional continuity committees that were led out of Academic Affairs in the Provost Office, and there are many, many students that served on those committees. So some of them were through shared governance. There's a number of shared governance committees through the Provost Office that were involved. There are, the Dean of Students Office has a couple shared governance committees. Those met throughout the summer. So as you know, there are, and this is a great strength of ASM. They have lots of shared governance committees throughout the whole university. And so a lot of those various committees were consulted throughout the entire summer to gather feedback, to keep them updated, to seek their input. Some of those include faculty and staff, but a lot of those committees also have students on them as well.
Okay, and then, last question. I guess, yeah, so I'm curious what, you know, what the process looks like when you do gather, you know, input from students or faculty as well, and how you consider that in your decisions? And I guess maybe kind of attach to that as well, like, what would you say to the, you know, that we had the ASM chair and also many students that were here speaking tonight? I'm just kind of curious to hear, like, you know, UW's response to that too, and how that is factored in the decision-making?
I'm not sure I understand your question completely, Alder, but I would just say that we listen to our students very, very carefully. We have 45,000 students, so we know there's lots of different voices and lots of different perspectives. I meet with lots of students in lots of different ways. I've met with the Student Inclusion Coalition. I've met with BSU. I've met with a number of student groups, both informally and formally. A number of us have open office hours, and so we're accessible to students through that way. We still do virtual office hours, not in the same way as we used to, but it's really sort of that quote "open-door policy." So I think, you know, we understand and appreciate the student voice on campus. It's a strong component of UW Madison. We care a lot about what our student experience is like. We have 5,500-plus students that are living in the residence halls right now who don't have to do that. We don't have a residency requirement here. And in fact, we are incredibly generous with our students to give them an option to not be in the residence halls. If they didn't want to, then at one point could even get refunds for that. And many, many students have still chosen to live in the residence halls and be here because they want to be at this university. They want this experience. As unique and hard and difficult as it might be, they still want to be here. And some of them still want in-person classes. And what I appreciate of what we've done, and I've heard this from students too, is not all do. Not all students do, and we heard that, that some feel like this is risky for them, for their own personal health, for their family's personal health. They have the choice then to take classes online. But there are other students that feel like their best learning opportunity is by being on campus and by being, in having the option to learn from in-person classes. When we had students that were quarantined, and we made phone calls or emails to all those students that were in quarantine and isolation for those two weeks, I talked to students who said, "I can't study at home. I need to be on campus." My best way to be a successful student is to not be learning from home online. I need to be in the residence halls where I have support, where I have access to technology, where I have access to services. That's the only way I can be successful. So I think there are lots of different voices of students on campus, and it's really, really important for us to listen to those voices. And I feel like we've done the best job that we can in trying to do that. Can we do better? Of course we can. We always can. But I think there's a real sincere effort to listen to student voices, and we work really, really hard to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. We have questions now from Vice President Abbas.
Thank you very much. I have a question for Lori Reeser.
Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. I think during your last answer to Alder Presto Jacomo, you mentioned you touched some of those points, which I'm going to ask you, is about in-person classes. Could you please explain what is a percentage of students are taking in-person classes right now? And what is your future plan? Are you going to keep that status quo with that percentage? Or are you going to go to increase? Also, the second question is, what type of measures are in place for in-person classes? And what type of technologies are you using? As an example, some companies are already modifying their HVAC system, their indoor air quality, their filtration system. So I'm also curious to know if that is a route you decided to choose. What type of measures are in place?
Thank you for your question, Alder. So the first question, and I want to make sure I got all these right, so if I miss something. But right now, about 30% of our classes are still being offered in person. So about 70%, over 70% of our classes are online, but about 30% are either in a hybrid or in person. We are still gathering information and trying to make decisions for the spring semester, so no final decisions have been made at this point. So we're still gathering feedback and information on that. And I'm sorry, I think you might have had one more question at the end. Can you repeat that last one for me, please?
Yes. I have one follow-up question of this 30%, and I will happy to repeat my other questions. That 30% is mostly for freshmen or so for more senior? Do you know the percentage as well?
You know, that's a great question. I'm not sure that I do. I might defer to one of my other colleagues, but I think it actually depends. So for example, if I'm not mistaken, like, our students in the veterinary medicine program need to take a lot of their classes in person. Our students who are in clinical programs need to take a lot of their classes in person. And so some of those would not be first-year students. In fact, the majority, a lot of our first-year students, sometimes those classes are larger classes, and all of those classes are online. So I would say it's actually, I haven't seen the breakdown, I'm sorry, I can't provide that number for you, but I do think that they're probably more likely to be juniors and seniors and professional students. We have clinical students, we have research students that may, that in-person instruction is the best way for them to accomplish those learning outcomes.
Thank you very much. And what is the 30% look like in numbers? If we put those percentages in numbers, like 10,000 students, 20,000, 5,000?
So you asked me to do math. So 30% of 45,000 students.
Okay. So that's approximately around 13,500, close to 14,000, between 13,000 to 14,000.
Okay, I trust you.
Somewhere there. All right, and then my question is about what type of measures did you place for in-person classes? To protect their health and help further people?
Yeah, I would, if, if I can start with some of the general answers to that, this is not my expertise, but I would also defer to both, oh, actually, is Gary Brown still on the call? He's our, he works in our facilities area and he would know far more in this space. Can I see if he's still on the call? And he might be able to answer that more effectively than I would.
Yep, Gary, you're unmuted.
Go ahead, Gary.
Sure. So we've been working on many, many different corrections, I would say, to our classrooms across the campus, actually, over the summer and preparing for the fall semester. That would include significant water monitoring for all of our buildings on campus. Obviously, as they sat empty for a while, water wasn't being flushed and used through the system. So we've done that now and prepared all of our buildings for adequate water supply. We've spent a lot of time looking at our HVAC systems and replacing filters and increasing airflow in our buildings, where our systems can handle it. Obviously, many of our buildings have older HVAC systems, and we can't just turn them up significantly to increase airflow on a moment's notice. You have to do some adjustments and changes to the systems and upgrades to those systems as we can and as we have funding available to do that. But we have been monitoring that very closely and adding airflow where we can in many of the buildings. We've spent a lot of time looking at all of our classrooms that would be used for in-person teaching and have spaced the chairs or desks out in appropriate ways and have marked the floors, marked the chairs. We've marked chairs in all of our larger lecture halls for places to sit, not, places not to sit, but places to sit, to make sure that people are doing their physical distancing appropriately. We're providing extra technology for many of our lecturers and our TAs and the faculty that are actually teaching in-person classes, providing them with microphones and speaker systems so that they could be heard while they had a mask and potentially a shield on. We've provided additional PPE services for many of our lectures and our faculty. So there's been an extensive amount of things done on campus to protect our students and our faculty as we were coming back to teaching here. And I think that is showed in the numbers and the information that Jake Baggett shared with us is that we're not seeing positive case testers, testing showing up from our classrooms. It is a significant low, if any, and I would ask, you know, to have Jake share more information about that. But we've seen that, you know, it, it, it's just not being shown out in the data from our classrooms on campus. In fact, everything that we've put in place is helping us push those numbers down and bend that curve back down. Does that answer your question?
Absolutely. Appreciate that, going into really detail. Another follow-up question is about testing. What policy UW plays for 13,500 students in-person class regarding testing? Either there is any policy to test them every week, every other week, or it's depend on symptoms?
Alder, I think it might be, that might be best answered by Jake Baggett.
Sure.
Thank you for that question. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so the testing we're doing is, is, is very extensive, has multiple, you know, approaches to that. As you might be aware, we're already offering testing to essentially anybody in the campus community that wants that. And we're approximately doing about 9,000 to 10,000 tests a week at different test sites located, in different locations at campus, including both walk-in as well as drive-up testing. And then we have cohort testing that's going on for different populations of faculty, staff, students, graduate students, and undergraduate students, both on and off campus. And I would just note that the cohort testing that we're seeing has particularly low testing results. Matter of fact, we have no recent positive cases in any of our faculty or staff and our teaching assistants or graduate research assistants in, in that, in that cohort testing. We see very, very low prevalence of undergraduate tests, positive tests in that cohort as well for off-campus. In addition, we're testing all residents of the residence halls every week. We were doing that every other week. When we started, we're doing that every week, and we're sampling each residence hall, floor of each residence hall every day so we can identify a sampling of what's going on there. And again, our overall test positivity rates there are less than 1.5% and have been for, for some time. And, and then we even further look for connections between those cases as, when we do identify those, those, those positive results. In addition, we're also testing wastewater to see if that gives us any indication of, of something developing. So we're looking at all kinds of different ways to evaluate what, what, what is going on on campus. Where are we seeing areas of concern develop so that we can, you know, like we did earlier, identify them, respond quickly and aggressively to, to change the results?
I, I appreciate the effort and the detail you mentioned. So you mentioned residence hall, you do testing every week. What about beside residence hall? What about students? Is there any, I will repeat my question. Is there any mandatory or policy set to test students who attend regular in-person class every other week or two weeks? Of each week, testing them to really make sure everybody's healthy, the teacher and the student? Or this is mostly depend as a volunteer, if people want to come and test them?
Yeah, and, and, and what we actually see is that those who have concern or worry actually are, are getting testing. So, you know, we would actually expect a higher rate of prevalence among those folks that would be the, the worried well. But we don't have a, a, a current requirement for all individuals who are on campus to get tested, but we certainly are making that available. We are looking at expanding our testing capacity for the spring to, to even be more inclusive. But right now, the, the strategy that we have is, is getting the desired results. But we, we will continue to look at any of those testing strategies that both are accessible and quick. And we've got a couple possibilities we're working on as we prepare for the spring.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter.
Thank you. And I don't know who could answer this question, so I'm just going to put it out there. Can you tell me if the campus goes to all virtual? How many employees does this affect? And I'm talking beyond the professors or TAs. I'm talking about all the support staff, maintenance, et cetera. How many employees will this affect?
I don't know if Gary or Lori wants to try that. If either of you are speaking, you're muted. You're unmuted on our end, though.
Okay, so this is Gary. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So just to give you some data, we have about 11 or 1,200 employees in facilities planning and management. I can tell you that a good number of them are on furlough and still on furlough because of the reduced need on campus. We do have many people working from home in facilities planning and management. In fact, I've been working from home since March, and many of my colleagues, all of my staff have been working from home. I would expect that if we were to continue online, many of us would continue in our normal patterns. But there would be a significant amount of people in some of the other shops and our custodial staff that would likely either take an additional furlough or have to be put on furlough. And others may, you know, potentially even lose their job because of the reduced need to have them on campus. So it does make a specific and undesirable impact as you think about moving everything online.
And Gary or Lori, my second question is, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. The university has been working with the Public Health and the Department of Health Services, correct?
Absolutely. Yes. In fact, Jake Baggett works very, very closely with our colleagues in, in Dane County Madison Public Health daily, probably more than that. So Jake, Jake, Jake can probably provide more specifics if you'd like more details on that. But yes, I think we work really, really closely with our city colleagues.
Great. And, go ahead, Jake.
And thank you, Alder, and thank you, Lori, for that. Yes, I work very, very closely, as my team does, with, with the Public Health of Madison Dane County, with Janelle and her team. You know, this is a, 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 a set of circumstances that affects our entire community. We're invested in the overall success of that effort. And in addition to that, we've also, you know, collaborate with our, the, the folks at DHS. And we've even had experts from CDC come in and, and provide insight and consultation for us as well to continue to support the work that we're doing. So we're not turning down any expertise to bring to bear on, on that, on our strategy.
Okay, thank you very much, Jake.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Presto Giacomo?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have two more questions. So the, the first one is going to be for ASM Chair Matthew Minnick, who I also believe was on the student cabinet, I believe, as well. So you, you heard, you know, what administrators, you know, what the thinking is on that. Could you kind of attest to what you've personally experienced as like de facto voice of many students on campus?
Yeah, thank you, Alder. You know, I, I don't want to speak for every student because that would be impossible, but something that we have heard from students is many of the concerns that were brought up by myself and other students tonight. And I think it's really disrespectful in many ways that administrators are claiming to talk for students when there are students in this meeting and students who've been even going to protests about a moral restart. There was a Gordon's graveyard protest hosted by the BIPOC Coalition several weeks ago. And as someone who's been on the Cabinet of Student Leaders since early September, I have seen no progress made in authentically asking what is the student voice? And a question I actually asked at our most recent meeting on Friday was, what is the result of these meetings? And has any of the feedback that, that we've provided been utilized to implement any such decision? And no answer was provided to that question. And I, you know, I, if I'm being honest, like speaking tonight and being very public and open about this has not been easy, but I think it's really important to show that behind the rhetoric and behind the public relations and all of that, there is so much concern on this campus by students and especially workers who are not being promised continuity of payments, even continuity of employment. And it's just been a really great concern for all of us. And in fact, late last week, an administrator sent me mental health resources as if like us, you know, as students advocating for these things is, is we are to blame and we are the ones who are wrong here. But the reason why I'm here tonight and to answer your question again about these meetings is just that, you know, student input has not been provided. We have no clue what's happening for the spring. Students are going to go home for Thanksgiving, for winter break, and then everybody's going to come back to campus in the cold weather in a state where cases are so high. And we, we are lost in the shuffle of things and seriously think that revenue streams and profits are, are way more important to these people than student lives. So, thank you.
Thank you, that's all.
All right, thank you, Alder. Alder Hennick?
Yes. My first question for the university is looking at the 30% in-person. If those classes were to go online, how does that impact students' ability to graduate on a, a track? Or how, how does that delay their graduation?
This is, yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the question, Alder. I, I'm not sure the mod, the modality of the courses would impact graduation except for a number of those courses that I talked about. Clinical courses that are required, in-person courses that are required for accreditation, which again, a lot of, some are in the STEM areas where you, you just can't do that virtually. So I don't have the exact number for you in terms of graduation, but there would be an impact, I think, on some of our students if we are not able to offer some courses in person.
Thank you. The other question was, this past spring, I heard from many residents on how devastating it was to their laboratory research when the university closed. What kind of an impact, if students go home, would that have on your, your research laboratories again?
I'm, I'm happy, this is not, again, my expertise per se, but just in terms of serving on executive council meetings with my other colleagues, I know that undergraduate research is a very important part of both the student's experience and certainly the support that our students provide in the labs. And I know that even students making decisions about going to, going to break and going home and, and whether to return to campus has, has absolute impact on the research that our faculty and scholars are trying to accomplish at the, at the institution. And it's a huge vital part of, of our student experience as well, especially for undergraduate students and especially for our graduate students. So I think it will have an impact, and an unfortunate impact. Jake Baggett might also have something to add to this question, too.
Thank you, Jake. Do you have anything to add to that?
Jake, you should have a prompt to unmute.
There you go. Are we good?
Yeah.
I'll figure this out by the time we're done. Thank you. Yeah, so, you know, that's one of the areas that we spent a lot of time looking at over the summer is, is getting the research enterprise and the lab, you know, circumstances, all, you know, well organized with health protocols so that we could safely reopen and restart all that important work that our graduate, undergraduate, and researchers were engaged in. And again, we look at that, that data every day and, and, you know, we're, we're grateful to be able to say that we've got no evidence that, that, that transmission is occurring in, in, in those, in those sites. And we're, we're very careful that, you know, and our own cohort surveillance also tells us that we're seeing very, very low prevalence of, of transmission even in those, in those populations areas. So we don't want to interrupt that. We know how important that work is, and much of that work can't really be accomplished in a virtual way and, and get the same learning as well as development of new knowledge.
Thank you. My third question, I'm, I'm not sure if there's someone on the line that would be able to answer, but I wanted to, to throw it out there. Is there anyone that's been working with either voter registration or the census from the university?
Um, yeah, Charlie Hasslett would be a good person to answer those questions for you.
Okay, Charlie. Looking at voter registration and census, I know that our census numbers from students have been down and we've been a little frustrated with that. But I mean, we're, we're looking at voter registration and census, these are, these are residents of the city of Madison. How have you found that interaction of students feeling at home in, in the city versus feeling like temporary dwelling, dwellers of the city?
Thank you for that question. We have worked very closely in partnership with, with the City Clerk's Office and others to register student voters on, on campus. We have worked very closely with them in terms of setting up in-person absentee voting, which is, which started today, actually, and goes for the next 10 days. And I, I don't have any exact, exact numbers that I can quote, but we've been very pleased with the number of, of voting, voter registrations that have taken place. And I'll be candid, one of the concerns we have is that if we end up telling students, you know, you've got to go home, they will have voted, registered here. And while it's possible to essentially un-register yourself here and re-register somewhere else or send a note to the, to the Clerk's Office here and say, "Send my ballot, you know, to my home address", our, our worry is that many students will not do that. And so you will see a significant drop-off in, in students who had registered to vote here in Madison not following through.
Thank you. And I, I just wanted to comment, in, in your language, you said, "Send them home", but really, it seems like, you could probably safely say a majority of the students at, at the University of Madison feel like Madison is their home. Would that be safe to say?
I think that's very safe to say, yeah. I, I was speaking specifically, I guess, about, about students in the residence halls. But what we've seen, and this was sort of alluded to before, we've seen, and this was sort of alluded to before, is even students who have, some of the students who have moved out of the residence halls as freshmen, have not moved back to their permanent home elsewhere in the state or the country, but in fact have rented apartments here in Madison because, again, they want to be in Madison. This is where they feel they belong, where they live, and they want to stay here.
Thank you very much. That's all my questions. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you providing an essential service to the city of Madison.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Heck?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to switch gears just slightly because I'm academic staff, I'm a researcher, I'm fortunate enough that I've been working from home since March. I've been in my office for maybe 30 minutes since then, and that's it. So I want to switch more to a worker perspective, and I'm interested in knowing about your protocols and decision-making related to, let's say, people who do not feel safe working on campus, even though they may be required to. You mentioned earlier that students who are not comfortable with going to in-person classes are able to opt out and learn virtually. So I guess I'm interested both in terms of faculty who perhaps are in high-risk groups, BIPOC workers of any type, academic staff or faculty. What's the decision-making process for deciding whether or not they can, you know, opt for virtual participation rather than in-person?
Alder, I can, this is Lori Reeser, I can start with that question and then certainly would probably defer to Charlie or Jake. I know that one of the callers mentioned that he provided paperwork to their disability person, and then that was denied. That's actually not the experience that, I'm not saying that may not have been his experience, but we worked really, really hard to provide training for our Human Resources and Disability Services staff so that if faculty or staff had reasons that they did not feel safe on campus, that as many accommodations as possible were provided for them. We worked hard this summer to provide a work share program so that instead of furloughing or laying folks off, we reassigned folks. We've continued to do reassignments for folks to try to preserve jobs. I know that concern was raised earlier as well. It's a high priority for us at the institution to protect our employees' jobs and to keep them working as much as possible. So to the best of my knowledge, at least, you know, I have 500, 600 employees under my area, I've not heard any concerns from any of the staff that accommodations have not been made. We've tried to provide some in-person services for our students because they are on campus, but again, if people have reasons to not do that, then I think most of those accommodations have been made. The same with instructors. I think we've worked really hard to accommodate the students' needs, the accreditation needs, the best learning outcomes for our students, but also what our faculty and our instructors feel most safely doing. So again, I would echo what Gary Brown and Jake have indicated, that we've worked super hard to provide a very, very safe work environment for campus and for employees, and we have, again, no evidence that there's been any transmission of the virus as a result of the work experience. So I think we've done pretty well in that area, but I'll also defer to Charlie or Jake if they have anything additional to add on that.
I would just add, I guess, reiterate the point that Vice Chancellor Reeser just made. We have worked really hard to try to accommodate employees, whether they're faculty or staff, who have concerns about being on campus because they have health issues, because someone that is in their home or that they care for has health issues. And through the DDR process and other processes, again, have tried to make those accommodations where we can. You know, it would be, it would not be true to say, you know, absolutely everybody who has requested one has gotten one because there are some jobs that one can only do on campus. You know, most of, most all of my staff are working from home. The standard has been, if you can do your job remotely, you should do it remotely. But there are some folks within my division that their job is here on campus, and we've worked hard to make sure that they're supported and safe with the equipment and so forth that they need, and I think you'll see that broadly across the campus.
My additions to that would literally be an echoing of the same sort of scenario, the staff that I have, that I work with through my university health services, mental health and physical health staff, as well as our prevention staff, are doing a combination of strategies. And, you know, we've been able to work out ways to support folks in doing that and still meeting our responsibilities for in-person care wherever that's critical that we do that. And so, again, there's not an absolute, but I think everybody's working very, very hard to accommodate those needs wherever possible.
So just to follow up, a question, I mean, it sounds like there are people on campus that may not want to be on campus, who are workers, probably, and some of that you're saying is a little bit unavoidable. You're saying you're taking, you know, precautions to make sure they stay healthy, et cetera. Does that extend to teaching assistants and research assistants, too? Do they have the same accommodations? And are they sometimes, do you think, forced to teach or conduct research because they are considered, it's considered that they must be on campus?
Again, I would say that we, the institution has made every effort to accommodate those who don't want to be on campus for whatever, a variety of reasons. But just as in, you know, employees generally, I suspect, although I can't say for sure, that there may well be some, either TAs or RAs, as you suggest, whose job it is to be on campus, and that's where their job is.
Just one more question, sorry. So in a lab, for instance, where people must be on campus, have there been instances of perhaps doing more frequent testing or, I guess everyone's allowed to be tested, but you're not forced to be tested, but to maybe have some mandatory testing for situations where people are forced to be on campus? Or is that, is it still pretty much voluntary?
I'm going to defer to Jake on that one.
Thank you, Charlie. Yes, we do have a process that in certain higher-risk situations, that might be considered higher-risk situations, where we can implement mandatory testing, you know, for people who need to work in those certain areas. And so, and, you know, so that is a process that can be undertaken, and certainly, there's been, there's been a few cases of that. But I want to reiterate that, you know, we look at all of the positive cases and we're particularly confident in what we've been able to see in both teaching environment as well as in other environments. We've not found any evidence that there's been any transmission within those spaces. And we think that's because people are actually following the protocols that have been established. So, you know, there is a process to doing that, and, you know, if it becomes important or necessary to do so, we do that. But we also, we don't put any kind of limitations on the number or frequency of tests that people are able to obtain themselves. And it is, it is great, I mean, we're very fortunate, we've been able to provide the testing to anybody who wants one, and the test results that we're getting generally are coming back within a day or so because of some of the testing we have available here on campus as well. And we're looking to increase that capacity as we move forward.
Thank you.
And I'd just add, if I might quickly, the process that we use in the accommodation process builds upon the federal ADA process. So this isn't something that we've necessarily constructed on our own, we're following and building upon the federal policies.
Alder, does that answer questions?
It does, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right, Alder Rommel, questions for registrants?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first I want to thank, first, the sponsors of this for allowing us to have a conversation and for the university for attending and having the conversation with us so that we all are kind of on the same page. As we all know, we're in a crisis. So having said that, and thanking everyone, what struck me with Ms. Restor's earliest testimony was she mentioned a staff survey, and I'm wondering if that went to everyone? Did, like, just academic staff get it, or did academic staff get it as well as faculty?
I can answer that again. There was a survey that went out earlier this semester that went out to all university employees, so that would be faculty, academic staff, and university staff. And then another follow-up survey just went out, I believe, last week, the same group. So it'd be all employees, all employees of the institution.
So that was after some of the stuff already was, you know, rolled out. It wasn't, like, in advance of how do we move forward, what should we consider? Did you get any early input?
There was, the first survey, let's see, we're in October. I think the first survey went out in September, if I'm not mistaken. And then the last, so Charlie, I'm asking if you think that was right, too. I think the first survey went out in September.
I think the first survey was early September, and then, as Lori suggests, another one just went out. And this is what we call a pulse survey that goes out to all employees that has a limited number of questions so that they're more likely to respond.
Great, good news. Can you just sort of give us a general look at what is your communication strategy? You know, you have different sectors, this large community, you know, including, you know, students and workers and staff and just, you know, the surrounding businesses that rely on your, what you provide to the community. Can you talk about how you put that together as an outreach?
Sure, I can take that. We have had a very robust communications and messaging strategy with a good number of folks from across the campus that are involved because, as you suggest, Alder, there are a variety of constituencies and stakeholder groups that we have to be communicating with. It's students, it's faculty, it's other staff, it is, it is off-campus students, the students in the res halls, the, and then, you know, local businesses. And so for each of those, each of those groups, we constructed, thought about, you know, what information was going to be important for them to know, what are the best communications channels to get that information to them? Not everybody reads their emails, right? What you'll see with our students is, it's going to be a combination of email and also social media because that's where they're picking up a lot of their information. And so, again, a comprehensive communication strategy along those lines. And then I might say that we also had a messaging strategy about, around a public health campaign, like you've seen in other places, that talks about the importance of wearing the face covering, of maintaining physical distancing, of proper hand hygiene, of staying home if you're not feeling well, of monitoring your symptoms. And if you were to wander around campus, you'd see lots of signs on doors and stand-up things in various buildings. Again, we did some things in terms of social media, pushing things out on Twitter and on Instagram and so forth to try to get through the various audiences so that they'd see that messaging as well.
Thank you for that. For your internal audiences, first, full disclosure, I work for a state agency, so I have been part of these sort of communication plans. So have you, as an internal strategy, had direct communication with, you know, I don't know how you would do it, we do it on Skype, which is really horrible, but anyway, to do an outreach, like, everyone comes and listens to the chancellor, and if you have questions, you give them in advance and the staff tries to advance, you know, prepare, that kind of thing.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for the reminder. We did a number of town halls for students, for parents of our students, for employees, for specific groups of employees, for example, the instructors, both faculty and academic staff that are instructors, about issues that were particularly pertinent to them as we were thinking about the instructional continuity. So, and we'd had, I think, fairly broad engagement in those over the course of the latter part of the summer and into the fall.
Thank you. Ms. Restor mentioned that there's been a, it sounds like a surfeit of testers that you were lending them to the public health, but I'm starting to, you know, wonder if people don't, some people might avoid getting tested because of the consequences of what they might learn. Have you, like, have any way to kind of ascertain if there's some avoidance? Like, if I get tested and positive, I might lose my housing or my job or affects my roommate or, you know, any of those kind of concerns?
Jake Baggett, is that something you want to try to answer?
Yeah, sure, thank you. You know, we actually don't have any evidence that that's occurring. We certainly, you know, would think about that and want to be sure that we're not creating that kind of environment. We want to make sure that people are willing to get the testing we need. We want to support them in making those kinds of decisions so that more importantly, we can support them and the folks around them in terms of maintaining the healthy campus community. We don't, we don't have any evidence to suggest that that's not, that that's not happening, that people are avoiding the testing because of consequences. I think most are actually very concerned about making sure that, doing the right thing. And I hope that what I've seen, you have seen as well, is that, you know, the people in our community are much more diligent about wearing face coverings and conducting themselves according to those recommendations than maybe we might have saw earlier in the summer.
And do the testers do tracking on, you know, I called student X and I got the call back, or I didn't get the call back?
Oh, yes, yes, we absolutely are doing that. We track them those, we send them electronic messages in addition to doing follow-up phone calls. The interview process for a case investigation is rather extensive, and it yields very important information in terms of what we should do next for those who might be impacted. So, yes, we, you know, sometimes...
What would you say the compliance with those callbacks is? Have you, like, you know...
I don't know that I could put a rate with that. I think it's good. I won't pretend that it's 100% because people are busy, but I think, you know, people take those calls seriously. We made it real clear that that's the expectation in terms of our health protocols, as well as our, you know, our Badger pledge, if you will, around how to deal with these things. And we think by and large, people are responding to those messages, and we persist because it is important to make those contacts.
So how many people have tested, how many students have tested positive? I don't know if you said that before and I missed it.
Sure, we did say it. I don't remember the top, off the top of my head, just a second here. Now, we've run over 60,000 tests since we started testing in August. Sorry, that's...
That's okay.
I'm looking at the dashboard, the campus dashboard. Total positive tests to date of students is 3,122, 130... of students is 3,122, 136 employees.
Thank you, Charlie.
And that's a combination of the on-campus testing, which is the vast majority of it, but also off-campus testing that might occur, for example, at the Alliant Energy Center or at a, at a student or employee's healthcare provider here in the Madison area or the Dane County area.
Great. My final question, and again, I appreciate everyone's diligence in answering our questions is, so hearing, seeing this resolution, hearing the testimony, this discussion, is there anything you would do differently or change? Or what's, what's your, like, say, what we'll do going forward after hearing the concerns of some Alders and some students and others in the community?
So, so as, as was mentioned before, we are looking at increasing the amount of testing that we do next semester. I think you'll see an announcement to that effect very soon. And we think that'll be yet another big step forward in ensuring that we are able to catch students in particular who might, might be ill even more quickly than we're doing now. I think the other thing that you'll see is, is continued engagement of, of faculty, staff, and students. That's typically done at the university through what's called the shared governance process. It's been around for an awfully long time. It was, in fact, in, in state law for many, many years. And I know that we're looking at ways to engage our shared governance colleagues even more.
Good to hear. Thank you. That's the end of my questions.
Mayor-
Mr. Alder?
Mayor, thank you. I just, an issue came up a couple of times that I just want to clarify, and that is our plans for spring semester. The Provost, and this was covered in the media, has already said that spring semester, our, our modalities, instructional modalities, will look very similar to what they look like right now. So, you know, one could imagine, you know, most, it will be virtual, but there will be some in-person, some hybrid. The dormitory, the residence halls, you know, will be open. And again, we're, we're looking at increasing the testing. So I just wanted to, to make that clear. And again, I think you'll, we're planning to do some communicating to, to our students with more specifics very shortly.
Thank you. I have no further questions for our registrants. So we need a motion. President Carter?
Yes, I move adoption and I'm asking for a roll call.
Thank you, President Carter. We'll make sure to do a roll call. Is there a second? Moved and seconded to adopt. So, discussion or, let's see if we have questions for staff? Alder Rumel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify if it was moved for the amendment as presented to us later today, the amended version. Is that what's being moved?
President Carter, what's your intention?
We can, I can move the amendment.
Thank you.
So the motion is the resolution as amended by Alder Presto-Jacomo's amendment, which was distributed earlier today. That's, that's all, Alder Rumel? Thank you. Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Attorney Haas.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, Attorney Haas. I had a question on the legal impact of this resolution. If we pass this this evening, what will be the legal impact of passing this resolution?
Thank you. I always focus really on the be resolved clauses. And as you can see, the two of the, the resolved clauses are asking the university to take specific steps related to the smart restart plan. And the third is simply to send the resolution to university and state officials. So it's really kind of a, I guess, a sense of the council resolution, asking the university to take those steps. It doesn't have any binding effect.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Lemmer?
Thank you. I was wondering if somebody from public health could weigh in on the impacts of, of sending students home, if that is advisable? I know we received questions about that via email.
Janelle is here.
Sure. So I think the, the challenge is there are, there are potential ways to send students home safely if we can guarantee that they are tested and stay in quarantine while waiting for results of those tests. That could be one possible way to minimize that risk. But it is not to eliminate risk of whatever may be happening here and moving back into the home community.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Hennick?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that I think that in, I feel very strongly that sending a portion of our population away from Madison, to me, is a very difficult thing to do. I don't see any other populations that we're looking at that were saying that there's an issue with transmission in another population and were saying that they should leave Madison. These are our residents, they're our neighbors, a part of our community. And I couldn't imagine doing that to any of our other residents. And I don't think it's the right thing to do here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. It appears we are now in discussion. So Alder Rumel?
Thank you. I just feel compelled to say that nothing in this resolution says anyone has to go back to their home that's not in Madison. The only people that might have to move if, if somebody followed this resolution are the students living in on-campus housing, presumably would have to find other accommodations, whether that's in Madison or somewhere else. So nothing in this says that to do online instructions, you have to do it at your birth home. I just want that to, I don't see that in this resolution. So let's just be clear that that's not what it's generally asking for. And you may or may not support it, but I just want to make sure that we know what we're voting on. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter?
Thank you. I have a question for Janelle.
Go ahead.
Janelle, when we are looking at residents in general, I'm talking about residents in general that should quarantine for 14 days, how do I want to say, how sure are we that they are quarantined for 14 days? I know we asked, but is there any tracking to know for sure? She's muted.
I would say that's a data point that we have less confidence in being able to report upon than compared to many of the others.
Okay, thank you.
President Carter, Alder Presto-Jacomo?
Are we in discussion or are we?
You're the only person with a hand up. So I believe we're in discussion now.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm going to be taking up a little bit more time than I usually do tonight. And that's no surprise to someone or everyone just because I'm the District Elder. And I just, I just want to say, like, it's been really interesting, this conversation, want to make that I did not want to introduce this resolution. I, it didn't have to be introduced. If our state's flagship public institution actually proactively engaged with leaders in, in this community, it true, it really did not have to. On June 17th, an executive unilateral decision was made to reopen campus and welcome students back. The burden to collaborate and communicate, communicate with community leaders was on UW administrators. And they clearly have consistently failed to do so. And so I, I won't take too long, but I just want to shed some light on this short timeline. In my position as District Elder, and the same can be said for District Five Supervisor Hozel, I've been sending emails, letters, statements, everything since the beginning of my term encouraging a moral and safe restart to UW Madison. I was never, never given direct responses from the chancellor or any of the administrators. Throughout the summer, many of us here tonight penned letters expressing our shared concern with the direction of reopening UW schools. And I would say that any socially aware person would know that young people, especially college students at one of the top party schools in the country are unpredictable and unfortunately, at times irresponsible. We, that's, all of us knew what was going to happen when students came back. That's why we signed that letter. It's common sense. That's just a fact. And I can tell you that as a young person. And to no one's surprise, in the first day back, 84 cases, it was a record spike. And, you know, cases continue to climb. There was a quarantine implemented, although administrators were keeping metrics that were being used to make decisions secret from the public. And so I heard this a lot, too. And I'm just going to say it like, yes, the cat is most certainly out of the bag. I will not disagree that, you know, the time to take drastic measures was a month ago. We're so far into this. Though I would, I will say that, you know, we'd be kidding ourselves if we accepted that there was nothing UW could do. You know, we definitely should be sending backs huge student populations with the looming risk. But there are definitely portions of the student population here that in every way are worsening the situation. You know, the social, the social scene and the nightlife in the city, it breeds risk. And it's just something that no one can tell you that there's no risk, not even UW. And I also think it's another interesting dynamic to it. You know, we hear this like, let's just enforce it. The city needs to work with us. I, I'm worried about even that in itself. You know, PHMDC needs to take more of an active role in this. But when really anything relies on policing, you know, we're betting on a system of, you know, with institutionalized white supremacy, literally bargaining with people's lives. And so I think, I, to me, it's been, it's been made enormously clear. And I think tonight has really shown quite a bit from my own perspective is that, you know, there's quite a bit of lack of understanding about what's going on. And unfortunately, I have to put some of the blame on UW because I don't, I don't know why we're being treated as enemies. You know, I'm, we're trying to work together. And the, the information that we've seen and delivered to tonight, I'd argue is a little bit manipulated. And I think you heard some testimony and also heard a lot of, you know, credible sources talk about how they've had anecdotal evidence of this not working out. So I, I know how easy it is to look at the data and, you know, that UW keeps graciously sending us. So, and think everything is all right. And, you know, while I'm not the one to overemphasize an Alder's own personal opinion over the general welfare of the city, I'd ask my colleagues to put themselves in my position. And for sake of the, for the sake of the student committee, that community, vote for this tonight. I should not have to attempt so many times to engage in dialogue to help UW reduce risk in their own plan. You know, I get emails almost daily from students in the downtown community, staff, too, that are telling me about their experiences. You heard one, Greg Glandback, tonight. You know, also, it's super telling, the status of the surveys that were sent out for students and faculty after the plan was implemented. And, you know, I would just, I would just say like, that shows how administrators push through a plan that on behalf of students, faculty, and community members placed a large risk that I think admin is calling acceptable. And I think that's really gross. You know, and to make things worse, UW is pushing full steam ahead with a football season. And so I kind of look at this and it just, it blows my mind. You know, and I'm, it's, I haven't seen and experienced, you know, much, I'm only seven years in my term, but, or seven months into my term. But this is, you know, this, it just makes me wonder when we'll start taking this seriously. You know, and I say this a lot, but it's so true. And like, it's a talking point that ASM has been saying a lot. You know, why are communities all over Wisconsin, you know, setting up field hospitals and taking nearly every step to reduce risk and prepare for a spike, but UW is somehow exempt from that caution, you know, for financial stability or for students that want to, you know, learn in the dorms? So, oh, and on top of that, you know, Wisconsin is also the COVID hotspot in the country. And so it's just so frustrating to think about. And also, you know, super important to mention that students are planning on going, students are allowed to go home during fall break. So why would we not take action now so that there's still time for students to safely transition? You know, a safe, risk-free transition when they do go home. And so like, it, it's completely absurd to me that we, we would be saying this and accept that we can continue with the status quo up until fall break. And again, like I said, like, no one's going to be able to tell you that there isn't a risk, especially when risk ends up impacting marginalized communities disproportionately. So also, I also want to take a second, too, to defend like the rhetoric of so many, you know, BIPOC leaders and allies, including myself. And I think it, it's pretty easy to conjecture, to make, you know, to make conjecture that because we have all chosen, chosen a firm stance, you know, and been aggressive with our rhetoric, that we've closed lines of communication. And so I would say, part of the reason I ran for council was I saw a huge disconnect between student leaders and communities and being organized or ingrained with immediate appreciation for what a platform means, a public platform. And I would say that anyone opposed to this rhetoric or who is worried at all has been woefully uninvolved in both the campus community and the needs of Black and Indigenous young people. It's not okay to inject your opinion last minute. And so I would, nearly a year ago, I was out protesting with students living in the Multicultural Center, the newly informed, newly formed Student Inclusion Coalition, which made extremely reasonable demands regarding UW housing. And can anyone guess the result of that? You know, really nothing. A committee was formed and truly what the students say is nothing came out of it. And it's also super telling that, and it should scare most of us, that UW has still not addressed concerns of the 1969 Black Student Strike. And so what I've quickly realized of, there is this false, there's this facade of student voice. UW has never listened to students. They've only been setting up meetings with those who have the privilege of engaging with them. Those have the privilege to run for office within ASM. And those have the privilege to understand the nuances of all of this. And so when they say that this represents young people and the students, you know, I'm really taken aback by that. And so I'd say, I know those who got meetings with admin, we talk about this a lot, with the current ASM leaders are predominantly white, affluent, in ASM leadership positions, and also have personal relationships. And so I would say like, it's easy to take UW at a word that they represent, you know, those in the campus area. But please, please do not. They're the farthest from it. You know, people living downtown are scared right now. Like this is perverse that UW is coming here and using doublespeak to, you know, talk about this data when I have evidence, you know, right now, or we, we heard some evidence tonight. You know, I would say also similarly to this resolution, it's, it's, it's non-binding. It may not have any impact. That's a fair argument. But I, I think it's so important to clarify that you cannot separate the continuous disregard of marginalized students by UW admin from the smart restart plan. Like white supremacy and the patriarchy, all are interconnected. And you cannot begin to address with one without the other. And so when people say like, it's unreasonable for me to want them to meet with BIPOC coalition, those are the people who are most impacted. It's common sense and it's, it's like an affront to everyone on campus that they haven't been meeting with them. So I would, I would kind of finish up with like, we as a council really have, have to confront this community authority that is recklessly endangering the lives of so many in Madison. By state statute, we have this responsibility. You know, the resolution before us, I'd argue is extremely lenient. There are exceptions for students who would be financially burdened, physically burdened, mentally burdened, and those who would experience a disruption in their academic requirements. And most importantly, those who would pose a risk of further community spread. And so I think that's, I want to make that so clear because it's been a, a talking point that people have thrown out there is that we should be sending students home without understanding the nuances of how we need to approach this. And again, this is a non-binding resolution. I think it's a, a chance for the council to take a stand. An extremely similar resolution was also passed by a large majority of the Dane County Board. You know, I understand the nuances and the sensitivity of the situation, which is why, you know, this resolution makes sure to clarify this point. And so I'm asking you tonight, Judge- Um, and so I'm asking you tonight, um, to vote for this resolution. That is a statement of goals. We hope UW can meet. Um, my work and my, uh, to reach out to these administrators and this attempts to engage with an administration that seems to not have an interest to talk to me will not stop tonight. Um, this in every way will uplift and empower a grassroots work and show UW the councils to distaste for a public institution that refuses to listen and sit with stakeholders, not just the ones they want to hear from. And so I think lastly, I just wanted to also, because it, and I wasn't planning on talking much about this, but I, I have an obligation to because, um, you know, I've been seeing BIPOC students mention this. It's really gross, and I'm disgusted to hear the weaponization of equity by UW to claim that students here, staying here on campus is an equitable solution. You know, the same could be said about, and, and using economic gain as a justification to keep students here. I've seen really problematic behavior by UW. And I, I can't sit by and let that happen when most impacted students and leaders, um, are saying the exact opposite. And I also want to make it very clear too, how I came to hold that opinion. I mean, I, I listen. I, I go to meetings led by marginalized activists and I listen. Um, I don't take up space or try to join the conversation. It's because I recognize my power dynamics as a person in power. I only add my opinion when providing context is helpful. Um, and so the reality is that, you know, I, I've said this so many times, but UW can't sit here and guarantee a safe semester. Um, we've already seen all the risks and the, the potential loopholes. You know, I, I would argue that the letter they sent and also some of the, the, you know, words spoken tonight were not, uh, encompassing of the entire situation. And I'm, you know, I hope that some of the student testimony and also the faculty testimony kind of helped that. Sorry for going so long, but I, I really hope, you know, my, the testimony and my words tonight, um, show you the reality of the situation on campus. Because what I'm frustrated about is that I live on campus, students live on campus, and we have administrators, we have adults, uh, grownups who are, you know, claiming that students want to live, uh, on campus without even living on campus with us and pretending to understand all of that. And so I would just say like, please listen to, you know, those of us who are actually li- living and working here, not administrators who live in the suburbs. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Abbas.
Thank you. I will be brief. I enter my name as a sponsor, so I just want to briefly talk about it. We saw that this is amended resolution in front of us, and that amendment is very reasonable. I also appreciate UW staff and as well as Assistant Chancellor to be here and explaining their position and also showing that commitment. They want to work with the community and also with student and other stakeholders, I think. So that's the way moving forward should be, all working collaboratively because that virus is an enemy which is unknown and it's, uh, there's no solution to defeat it. So making guesses is extremely hard, how it's gonna impact the community. Uh, one thing in this particular resolution I appreciate is about online learning. Uh, thirty percent mean twelve thousand. If, if it's forty-seven thousand students, that is twelve thousand students. That's a significant amount of people, uh, getting into the classroom. And I do have concerns with that amount of people engaging. And I know there are a lot of measures in place, but at the same time, if we look at the health aspect of, of city and county and other organizations where everything is remotely, um, essential classes, I do understand that point is valid. But at the same time, there's not enough data during this discussion where we can really see how many students are really taking essential, who are not taking essential, what exactly essential mean. So there are some question marks around that data, but the numbers are really high. And we already been through, um, on COVID. COVID, I some say it's a second wave. I think so. We are still in the first wave. We're still going through really horrendous and bad situation happening. And last thing I will say, uh, you know, as a parent, I, my one-year-old go to a daycare and the daycare provider asked us as a parent, she want to take a CPR class, and there's a two option, either in person or either online. But if you do online, you're not able to really do what you're called. Compression or whatever the word you use. It's important for a parent to have a daycare provider or, uh, to have proper training, but we chose to get her through online to protect her health, my kid's health and other people's health. And as a parent, that's a decision I took. I cannot make that decision for UW. I cannot make the decision for those students there. But as a policymaker, it's my responsibility to have a defensive approach and have an approach of safety and concern. And with that approach, I'm gonna support this resolution. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. I'm gonna turn the chair over to President Carter because my computer needs to restart. And if staff can please make President Carter a co-host.
You are a co-host now.
Thank you, Alder Hennig.
Thank you very much. Yes, I just wanted to highlight, it was, it was stated previously that this doesn't, um, actually ask people to leave campus. But in the, the bullet point number three, it says not allow students to return to on-campus housing until it is safe to do so. Um, so I just wanted to put that in the record.
Thank you, Alder Hennig. Are there any other Alder Evers, Devers? No, I know it's.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I, I signed on with those who strongly spoke out against, uh, the notion of UW restarting. And those of us who, uh, took that position predicted that bad things could happen. And lo and behold, bad things did. But as Aldo Prestigiacomo says, the cat is out of the bag, and I'm not sure if this resolution actually, alright. Here's where I think the resolution, the force of it comes is that there's been this breakdown in communication where students don't feel like their voices are being heard. This non-binding resolution has been viewed by UW as somewhat of a threat, hence the big PR campaign, including personal calls to Alders from the chancellor. I understand those calls did not go to the district alder, District Eight Alder, which is disappointing. But it sounds like we're kind of in a pissing match, um, between the students and the administration, and we're asked to take sides. I will note that we have the Joint Campus Area Committee as a venue for these, this type of discussion where, uh, Alders who represent neighborhoods adjacent to the university, including the District Eight Alder, uh, can work with UW staff to address these concerns. This issue has not been brought up there, and that's perhaps because the District Eight Alder no longer has confidence in the willingness of UW administration to take serious the concerns that are expressed. But I'm not willing to sign on to this, as much as it really pains me not to support a district alder who makes such a passionate plea. But I'm, I, I'm not in favor of sending students home or, or foreclosing their opportunity to live where they currently live and giving them little option but returning home. I think that there are risks to that. I, I, those risks could be managed, but not perfectly, what we've heard from public health. Uh, but I do want to say to UW and to the administrators there, it's concerning to me that there is this breach in communication, that there is this pissing match going on. And I do think it's incumbent, and it's the responsibility of the administration to sit down with the District Eight Alder and with the county supervisor who represents, uh, students on campus and try to repair this breach in, in communication. I don't think that the current status right now is helpful to anybody. So I'm not gonna be supporting this resolution, but I would encourage, uh, this topic to be brought up to the Joint Campus Area Committee. But I would encourage the administration to do a restart in terms of their serious and engaged communication with student concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Evers. Alder Lamer.
Thank you, President Carter. I, I will not be supporting this resolution. They, what it, it calls for, to me, sounds like, you know, a blunt instrument. Moving to one hundred percent online learning when there are things like labs and clinicals and other types of coursework that require in, in-person element and, um, uh, requiring on-campus students to leave, to me seems not, like a, you know, like a blunt instrument. I think, you know, more discussion or collaboration, um, with UW and, and with public health and, you know, with these, you know, different bodies that, you know, allow those discussions to take place would probably be a more productive approach. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, President Carter. I love the expression of, um, of the, the Alder when he, when he said it was a, a contest. And I had my hand raised for quite a while, and, um, it was around communication. And Alder Rommel really asked some very significant questions because they had some, some answers in terms of the plan. But what was definitely missing for me was the voices of the students. And that was a breakdown in that communication process. And so, um, I'm, I won't be supporting the resolution because, uh, pulling the hammer down is not going to resolve what the issue is. The issue is a lack of communication. It seems as though, um, not only just the university, but, you know, who's at the table talking about what is in the best interest for the, for the campus, for the students, uh, for online workers? So there's a lot of conversation going on. And the missing part for me is the voices of the students. Now, the requirement is, is that when you come to the table, you come to the table with a sense of, this is what's facing us, how can we resolve it? How can we, how can we hear those voices and move on? That was a definite missing part for me. Uh, but that's not strong enough for me to support a resolution. And especially with this one sentence in, um, uh, where it says, not allow students to return to campus housing. And so, so that is a piece that was in there. And so the teeth of this resolution, um, is somewhat watered down. But the strength of it is, is getting those people, getting those, um, um, players to the table. And I would say to not only, um, uh, for the, uh, university, but public health, all of those who are responsible for making those decisions in the, um, institutional district, um, should get together and resolve this. This, this is not a hammer place that I'm able, I'm comfortable with. So I won't be supporting it, but I am really concerned that all voices have not been at the table for the betterment of the community, for staff, uh, and for the university, and especially for the students. So I won't be supporting this resolution.
Alder Max.
Thank you, President Carter. Yeah, so I just, I will, I quickly want to clarify, um, Alder McKinney, that in the new amended resolution does say, um, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it should have been sent to you, um, until safe to do so. And so I think, you know, I won't even pretend to sit here and say like, that's even a big issue because this is a non-binding resolution. I, I've been, students before me have been trying to engage with UW, um, in meaningful dialogue forever. Um, and so like, I think it, it, it really got to this point because we've been pushing and pushing and pushing and receiving nothing back. And so we keep saying that, you know, the city and county need to work together more, and let's go back in discussion and dialogue. But the city and county and the chancellor are meeting like frequently. The reason that we introduced this was because a section of the population was being disenfranchised. It's like, I, I mean, I would ask you to think about what passing this does and what not passing it does. You know, you can vote this down tonight and, you know, show that the council doesn't want to stand fully by this. But I think if you support this tonight, it really has an opportunity to uplift Black and Indigenous, people of color who are on campus right now, um, who've been disenfranchised, and that's who it is. So I, I would just end by saying like, I, this is a non-binding resolution. I'm not gonna pretend like I, I honestly don't expect UW to follow every single one of these based on how they've reacted to my own suggestions and anyone's suggestions. Um, but I do think it's important to make a, a statement. Um, like I said, I'm an organizer. I appreciate the value of a platform. What, what good is voting this down and not doing anything and asking UW to go back into dialogue when that's what they failed to do? You know, I, I just, I don't see it as, um, any aid to the situation at all. Um, in fact, I think voting it down would prove UW's point that they don't necessarily need to listen to populations of students that disagree with them. Because like I elaborated on earlier, that's the trend of UW for the past three years. Um, and I've had long discussions with my predecessors, with, um, you know, community leaders, ASM representatives, the BIPOC coalition. Like, I'm not just pulling this out of nowhere. This has been something that's been going on. And I'm, I'm sorry I wasn't here earlier to, um, you know, shed light on how big this issue was. But I, I can't sugarcoat the fact that UW has ignored a huge portion of the population that's most impacted. And it's, it's not just the BIPOC coalition. This goes back to, like I said, nineteen sixty-nine. Um, and I think the last year, yeah, it's gotten heated. I agree that, you know, maybe we've used our voices, um, and, you know, spoken up when they didn't expect us to, and maybe that hurt relationships. Um, but from my point of view, I would gladly do that if it meant that I was standing up for marginalized students on campus. Um, I think that I elaborated on why, why, you know, um, there was an institutionalization is because ASM leaders and, um, people were all about maintaining relationships with UW admin when Black and Indigenous people of color were being ignored and disenfranchised. So, yeah, I, I would just say like, think about what passing this would do and think about not passing it would do. And, um, I know we're all here for the general welfare of this community, and I certainly agree that there are nuances to this. Um, but I don't think voting it down is going to show UW to change anything. Um, in fact, I expect them to not respond to me in the morning. Um, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Max. Uh, Joe, can you make mayor co-host again?
Thank you, Alder Carter. So we have Alder Carter in the queue and then Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you. I will not be supporting this. And I'm not gonna go into a ditrod. Some of your comments are comments that I would be, um, making now, but I'm, I'm not gonna be, um, I'm not gonna repeat them. But I do feel that, um, this is a unique situation, and, um, I will not be voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Harrington McKinney.
Uh, Madam Mayor, um, the Alder said that I had the, uh, wrong amendment. I thought I had the latest one, and he, so, um, could someone read the amended one so I'll know what it actually says?
Alder, I'm looking for my version of it, if anybody has it handy. Alder Hennig.
Yep, so the amended version changes, uh, subpoint one and three. Subpoint one is only offer online instruction and use it as the default modality, with an exception only for independent study credits necessary for international students to maintain their visa status. And, uh, subpoint three is not all, not allow students to return to on-campus housing until it is safe to do so, granting exceptions for those who would be financially or physically burdened or for those who would provide a risk of further spread. So the changes are that, um, the sentence- So the changes are that the sentence or the phrase stating until public health Madison and Dane County reports zero cases for 14 consecutive days is struck completely out of the first one and it's struck and replaced with until it is safe to do so with bullet three.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Hennig, did you wish to speak in addition? No. Thank you, Alder. Vice President Abbas on the resolution again.
Thank you. Really want to say one quick thing. I don't I don't think the intention of the resolution was to force students and UW leaders to have a conversation. And I am purely voting with the concerns of COVID-19. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak. A roll call vote has been requested. So again, the motion is the resolution as amended by the amendment that Alder Hennig just read. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, I will ask staff to mute themselves as I unmute you all and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Rommel?
Yes.
Rommel, aye. Alder Skidmore? Alder Skidmore, no. Alder Tierney?
No.
Alder Tierney, no. Alder Vervier?
Aye.
Alder Vervier, aye. Alder Abbas?
Aye.
Abbas, aye. Alder Alboras?
No.
Alboras, no. Alder Balday?
No.
Alder Balday, no. Alder Bidar?
No.
Alder Bidar, no. Alder Carter?
No.
Alder Carter, no. Alder Evers?
No.
Alder Evers, no. Alder Foster?
No.
Alder Foster, no. Alder Furman?
No.
Alder Furman, no. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Heck?
No.
Alder Heck, no. Alder Hennig?
No.
Alder Hennig, no. Alder Campbell?
Aye.
Alder Campbell, aye. Alder Lemmer?
No.
Alder Lemmer, no. Alder Martin?
No.
Alder Martin, no. Alder Prestajakamo?
Aye.
Alder Prestajakamo, aye. Five ayes and 14 nos.
With five ayes and 14 nos, that item fails. And we will move on to item number 59. And I'd like to ask unanimous consent from the body to take up items 59 and 60 together. Is there any objection to doing so? I'll mute you all again, sorry. Seeing no objection, we'll take up both items 59 and 60. We do have registrants on this item. Let's see if any of them are with us. So I'd ask the registrants, we're taking both items together. If you're registered on both items, please speak to them both at once. And we'll start with Kevin Burrow of University Ave in support, representing Northian Bruce Architects, to be followed by Joe Krupp.
Good evening, this is Kevin Burrow. There has been some discussion that occurred during the day today, so I withhold any further comments and just be available to follow up with any questions.
Thank you. Next is Joe Krupp to be of Woodland Trail in Middleton, to be followed by Mel Freitag. Do we have Joe here?
Yeah, I'm here. I can unmute. The same as Kevin, we I'm going to defer any of my comments until this is brought up at the next meeting.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Mel Freitag of Pinoshe Ave in opposition, representing the Lake Hedge Neighborhood Association, to be followed by Peter Anderson.
Neither of those names are in the list.
Okay. How about Emily B. of Bainbridge Street in opposition, to be followed by Stuart Glosser?
Yes, Emily is here. Emily, you may have a prompt. There you go. You are unmuted, Emily. We cannot hear you. Do you have a separate mute on your headset? Looks like you just muted yourself. Should be another prompt. Okay, you're unmuted. Still cannot hear you, Emily.
Emily, you might try turning your volume up.
All right, can we go ahead to Stuart?
Joe, if you can see if you can troubleshoot there. Next is Stuart Glosser, also of Bainbridge in opposition, to be followed by Gila Shoshani.
Hi, I guess I'm I would like to conditionally withdraw my right to speak and, you know, assuming that it goes for referral to the next meeting, and I guess I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Next is Gila Shoshani of Bainbridge in opposition, to be followed by Elizabeth Shoshani Anderson. Oh, sorry, Elizabeth is just available for questions.
There is no Gila in the list. I'll try one more time with Emily. Emily, there should be a prompt on your screen. Can you hear us? More importantly, can we hear you?
Well, we're trying. I'll say that Elizabeth Shoshani Anderson of Bainbridge was available in opposition, available to answer questions, as was Scott Burkhardt of Jerome Street. Hawk Sullivan of Mayher Ave is neither supporting nor opposing, available to answer questions. Jane Ostrom of Bainbridge in opposition, available to answer questions. Do we have Emily?
Try one more thing. Where did she go? There you are, unmuted. Okay, Emily, can you hear us?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Excellent.
Go ahead. Oh, have we lost her again?
I I understand there may be a motion to refer this item and therefore I conditionally withdraw my right to speak pending referral. If this referral is not made, I ask to be given the courtesy of presenting. I also believe that many other neighborhood residents with an interest in this issue were advised there may be a referral, which may be why they are not on this call and happily in bed. But I know they remain invested in this issue and will continue to monitor it. Thank you for coming back to me and giving me some time.
Thank you, Emily. All right, so looking at the list of folks registered on item 60, it's a very similar list, I think, just adding Liz Danenbaum of Major Ave in opposition, available to answer I think that is it. Everyone else, I think, has already been called. So are there questions for any of our registrants? Seeing none. All right, so the question is reconsideration. President Carter, a motion to reconsider?
Move to reconsider.
Is there a second? Alder Harrington McKinney will second. So the motion is reconsideration of items 59 and 60. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Alder, President Carter?
Yeah, and and Alder Abbas might have something to say too. One of the reasons why I wanted this to be reconsidered was because of our desperate need for affordable housing and to be able to talk to the developers, which we did not have the opportunity at the last meeting. What I found out today, late this afternoon, is that Alder Foster did talk to the developers and wanted this to be referred to the November 17th meeting, and I'm fine with that.
Thank you, President Carter. Seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of reconsideration? Seeing no objection, we will recording unanimous vote in favor of reconsideration and the items, both 59 and 60, are before us again. Alder Foster.
Thank you. I'd like to move referral to November 17th council meeting.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to refer both items. Are there any questions or is there any discussion? Alder Foster.
Yeah, just to clarify, so you heard from several of the speakers, including the applicant and President Carter just mentioned as well. So I have been in discussion with the applicant on some potential additional conditions of approval that could potentially help address some of the objections from the neighbors. So we're going to continue to work on those and both ask for referral of this item to November with the goal of trying to get some resolution there.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none.
Call the question.
There is no further hands raised, so is there any objection? The motion is referral. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing no objection, both items 59 and 60 are referred. And President Carter?
Thank you. Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Vice President Abbas will second. So is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Have a good evening.